Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Uh, this is September the 7th. Regular board meeting. And at this time, we will have the pledge allegiance and then after the pledge allegiance, then we will have the land acknowledgement and then we'll proceed on with the meeting. At this time, let us stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we go to the land acknowledgement.
Thank you. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenyo, Moicma, Carkin, Aluni peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy.
All right, thank you. And now we are moving on to start the meeting for closed session. And once again, welcome to tonight's meeting. We are about to go into closed session. But before we do, the board is here to receive public comment on any closed session item that is agendaized. The board would then adjourn to closed session and reconvene in open session to continue with the regular agenda at 6:30 PM. If you are attending the meeting in person here at DeJohn and you wish to make a public comment now on the closed session item, you would need to submit an orange card request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak. If participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on the meeting. By phone, there is no yielding of time to another speaker and there is no substitution of speaker permitted. Please finish up those cards if you need, if you need, if you want to speak. That, um, now if you are here in the audience and if you are in the Zoom or attending by phone, please get in line to speak by raising your hand now. To access translation of the agenda, click on the top of the web page using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available by Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the Brown app, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do and do not use usually, excuse me, usually respond to items presented in public comment. Please note that the order of business may change, be changed without notice. And at this time, now we will go to the roll call, Dr. Hurst.
Thanks so much. President Christian.
Present.
Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy.
Present.
Trustee Smith-Folds.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good afternoon, present.
Trustee Phillips.
I'm present and in the room at DeJohn.
Trustee Reckler.
Good afternoon, present.
All present and accounted for.
All right, thank you. And now we'll proceed on with the, excuse me, with the meeting this evening. Uh, we discussed in closed session, government code 54957-7. Tonight, the board, the board will consider liability claims, conference with labor, negotiation, public employee discipline dismissal release complaint, student discipline, education code section 35146. And then we do adjourn and then we will come back into open session for 6:30 PM. So see you then at 6:30 PM and at this time we're gonna close out. And are there any public comment? I'm sorry, are there any public comment in for the closed session items?
There's no public comment.
All right, thank you. And now we will adjourn, but we will be back at 6:30 PM. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. The board just returned from closed session. And we are continuing on with the open session of the, the Wednesday, September the 7th, 2022 regular board meeting here at DeJohn Middle School. To access translation of the agenda, click the top of the web page using the word English for translation into multiple languages. Meeting interpretation services are available in the Zoom by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen. Due to the COVID, ongoing COVID-19 concerns, members in which the board education meetings are conducted has changed. Thank you in advance for your understanding and cooperation as we experiment in new ways to conduct the people business while allowing the maximum participation and hearing to our values of respect and safety for the community. We have changed the public comment format, which now occurs at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for no more than one hour and includes any agendaized and non-agendaized item. The time allotted for each speaker is two minutes. We are about to start public comments, so if you are attending the meeting in person, you would need to submit an orange request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. Please finish up and don't raise your hands and turn in your orange card to staff members now. If participating by Zoom, you would need to raise your hand by clicking on appropriate icon, zoom out or by pressing star nine. If accessing the meeting by, by phone, there is no yielding of time, nor is there substitution of speaker permitted. If you are making a public comment from Zoom, please raise your hand now. Due to the Brown app, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to them or presented in public comment. And now we will report out from closed session, Dr. Hurst.
Thanks. So regarding agenda item A 6.1, the board voted to reject the claim presented on behalf of Jay Massey dated 8/11/22 related to alleged property damage. Vote was as follows. At the time, trustee clerk Gonzalez-Hoy was absent. Trustee Phillips, yes. Trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith-Folds, yes. President Christian, yes. Also, there was a vote to readmit student case number 212205. The vote was as follow, trustee Reckler, yes. Trustee Smith-Folds, yes. Trustee Phillips, yes. Trustee Clerk Gonzalez-Hoy, yes. And President Christian, yes. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hurst. And now we are about to go into public comment. So remember to turn in your, your orange card, the, and we are going to start public comment at this time. And so turn it to staff.
Our first public comment is Kimberly Chamberlain.
Good evening, board. I'm Kimberly Chamberlain. I have PTE Local 21 SSA Chapter President. I'm also a school district employee and as you can see, I'm wearing multiple hats tonight with all my sunglasses and my glasses on. So far, this school year has kicked off to a great start. We are in the process of working with the district and providing PD coming up on that October 10th, uh, smoke day. And hopefully it will be a non-smoke day for everybody and then students will get a break. But we were working with the district very proactively in getting training and health and wellness together. I think it is a great project for all classified employees on that day. And we're working towards that to make sure that they are healthy and well-prepared to keep serving our students and staff throughout the school year. So we do appreciate that. Um, I also want to give a big shout out to all of our office managers and secretaries. We are working very hard and see them a little bit tired today when I had our meeting with them, but they are working very proactively. I see them working with parents and students needing lots of extra help if it's out there, especially with just greeting families. So again, board, I really recommend that you guys go out there and continue to greet families, say hello to them and help out those school sites when the, with those parents that want that just know which direction to go in. So we do appreciate that and thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Our next public comment is Annette Gregg.
Good evening. WCC USD's dual language, dual language immersion programs prepare today's youngest learners to be tomorrow's leaders. Students in grades kindergarten through six learn to think critically, compassionately, and creatively in both their native language and English. WCC USD's rigorous program connects our diverse communities and prepares students for college career and beyond. This is the promise that you promote on your website. Yet it is a facade in stark contrast to the reality of the dual immersion programs that you currently offer. I come to you tonight as the parent of a kindergartner and a third grader who are in their fourth week of school at Stewart Elementary in the DLI program and who both do not have teachers. The end of this week marks 10% of the school year gone. Third graders at Stewart have been split up, divided into first, second, third, fourth, and fifth grade classrooms where overburdened teachers don't have the time or resources to prepare for an additional four to five students from different grade levels, much less support their Spanish language development. A district that believes in the value of bilingual education does not leave staffing up to chance. They engage in active recruitment and creatively think of how to retain quality bilingual teachers. They connect with the community. They form pathways for students to become teachers where they grew up. They provide financial and professional incentives, including collaboration opportunities and professional learning. A district that believes in the value of bilingualism actively recruits students and families, shares the successes of multilingualism widely, celebrates multiculturalism, and ensures the sustainability of programs by being proactively connected to the community. A district that believes in bilingual education is not caught off guard with dwindling student enrollment numbers in DLI programs and a lack of teachers. Stewart currently lacks DLI teachers in kindergarten, third, and fourth grades. We must do better to support the programs you claim to have in the district.
Our next public comment is Kalela Leonard.
Hello, everyone. My name is Kalela Leonard. I am here to represent and advocate for my child in the fictive kinship we receive from Bright Futures. Today, I like to express my sincere gratitude to Bright Futures Growth and Development Center. You truly have my back. Thank you for making my days less stressful by teaching, providing transportation, and caring for my child while I'm at work. To the board, I am a single mother who attends school and works and picking up my children from school is nearly impossible. However, with the assistance of Bright Futures, I have been able to do what is required of me as a parent while feeling at ease because I know my child is in good hands and safe. It is said, it takes a village to raise a child and Bright Futures has been a part of my village for over four years. Bright Future provides our children with food, homework, assistance, and extracurricular activities. We don't have a lot of resources for them already and parents are overwhelmed. As a result, we must collaborate to keep these programs supported for the sake of our children's development and future. Without assistance from the community, how do we proceed with fulfilling this matter? Most schools lack the capacity of resources to conduct after-school programs. However, Bright Futures is actively striving to improve its community and advocate for our children. So decisions on whether to assist them should never be reluctant. Given the long history of care, my question is, why is Bright Futures not under contract with the school district? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Jason Holloway.
Hello, members of the board. Uh, my name is Jason Holloway. I have, uh, I'm a Pennell resident. I have a seventh year or seventh grade student who attends, uh, Bright Futures Growth and Development Center and I'm here to advocate for, uh, you funding them. Uh, just speaking from the perspective of a, a, a single parent, single father. Um, you know, Bright Futures has really been kind of a saving grace. I look at it as a haven for, um, just community in a way that we haven't had, uh, especially in Richmond. You know, I think that we need to really foster, um, the development of our kids in these type of environments. My son has grown so much. His confidence has been built. Um, he's learned, uh, responsibility, uh, learned to care for, uh, other members of this community. So, uh, I just hate for, for this opportunity not to be available to those who do not have the means. Uh, so again, I just, um, just behoove you guys to please fund, you know, Bright Futures Growth and Development Center. It's been, uh, life-changing for me and my son. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Shalon Harrison.
Good afternoon, board. I just wanted to remind you guys that we do have a resolution for Black students in our district and you guys need to remember that we asked for a special board meeting that I didn't remember that you guys made sure happened. So we want to make sure we get our special board meeting and we also want to know what's going on with the money for Black kids? How much of the money from the, um, the budgets that the state gave? How much of that is going into the past budget? We want to know where the resources for Black children in our district that we can utilize to ensure that they're getting equal opportunity for education and that parents have the support and resources they need from this district. We are not included in a lot of things that's happening. And when you guys make decisions on what services that we get, we're not at the table. And we have developed groups and services for us to be at the table and we're not at the table. We want to be at the table when you guys have decisions made about our children and how things are going. And also there needs to be someone monitoring the principals and supporting the principals that can't engage Black parents because Black parents are available and we're here and we're showing up and we're not being engaged and know what's going on for our kids. So I would appreciate if you guys would look at scheduling the board, special board meeting so we will know what services are in the district for our children and also where's the data that was for last year for the services you guys provided that worked and didn't work. And also we want to know how much resource, how much money are you putting towards our children? Where's the money at and how much of it is going towards our kids to, there, there's been a pandemic for two years. What are you going to do special for Black kids to make sure they're not left further behind in this educational system? Thank you.
Our next public comment is Shalon Santiago.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst and board member trustees. I'm Shalon Santiago, the dedicated mom of Christian and Ava who are students at Stewart Elementary. You might remember me. I greeted you at our school. Remember? I'm also the parent behind the social media video entitled, "Where's My Teacher?" Which has more than 9,000 views at this point. Stewart is a little school on the hillside that is forgotten. When people around town, when we talk about people around town, they never know about Stewart. For example, I talked to Mayor, um, Salimi and he was unfamiliar with Stewart. He didn't know that we had a DLI program. That speaks volumes. Our elected officials, including WCC USD board members, forget about Stewart. We are here tonight to remind you our students deserve a fair and equal education. All kids living in the United States have the right to a free public education. The Constitution requires that all kids are given equal education. I repeat that, equal. My son has had, not had a teacher all year. He has a substitute teacher right now. That's a great Band-Aid. But that teacher doesn't even have credentials. That teacher doesn't even have curriculum because there's not a teacher that set that curriculum. She's a substitute teacher. She's a babysitter. How is it possible that Stewart is severely understaffed yet Eller Horse, our neighbor school a mile away, is overstaffed? I personally know that Eller Horse has three classes in first grade that have 15 students each. They have three classes in second grade that have 15 students each. How are they overstaffed? And we are severely understaffed. You cannot hide with the excuse saying that there's a teacher shortage. There is not a teacher shortage. There are teachers in our district that are overstaffed. There's schools. This is you playing favoritism. That's all there is. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Kristen Coleman.
Good evening, board. My name is Kristen Coleman. I come here representing Bright Futures Growth and Development. I am a mother, but not only am I a mother, I am a working mother. I am also a single mother. Um, I come to you with the question, why Bright Futures does not have a contract with the school district? I'll explain to you why I think that is important. Bright Futures and Development, as I explained before, um, well, I didn't explain yet, but Bright Futures and Development is the school that my daughters, Malaya and Wayland attend. Malaya goes to Bright Futures as an after-school program. They provide transportation for her, um, from the school to Bright Futures. There are limited after-school programs, as you know, in our district. Not only are they limited, but the ones that we do have are costly. Without Bright Futures, I wouldn't be able to have my daughter in the program or, um, it would be difficult for me to also get to work. I've been with my, in my career for 17 years now and I would hate that school or after-school program was the issue of why I couldn't get my, get to work one time or why I would lose my job. Without Bright Futures, that would make it difficult and that would be a possibility. Um, Bright Futures not only provide transportation during a pandemic, they were also a vital resource in a community where our kids were able to attend for the parents that were working to have somewhere to do their online learning. They helped with homework. They also provide resources to us, financial literacy. They provide, um, meals to our kids and, um, resources to enrich our kids. As we know, finding affordable and quality daycare and preschool programs, it's, it's, it's not, um, quickly, easily accessible and Bright Futures provide that. So I ask you the question again, why does Bright Future not have a contract with the school district?
Our next public comment is Idrissa Latier.
You all know who I am. Idrissa, mother of four, president of Bright Futures. Lord knows I don't want to be down here again, but I have to look you in your lying faces and tell you about yourselves. I don't need to sell Bright Futures. You know who we are. You know what we've been doing for the last 26 years. We have a Black superintendent, three Black people on the board. I'm talking to you too, Jamila. And we got, there's a Black office, but the one business has been around for 26 years. We don't have a contract. Last year was our first year not having a contract. Duffy saw more value in what we were doing than you. Hurst, congratulations, Scotty, wherever you are. You finally got a brother to ma- make your, be your head coon, a new Black puppet. Hurst, are you scared of these so-called elders? You've given them all your power. You need to do your research and quit letting them lead the narrative and quit letting them punk you. You guys are all pitiful and you should be ashamed. You too, Demetrio. You've been around Bright Futures since you got here. How dare y'all not let us take care of these kids? And if it was about Black kids, we all wouldn't be here talking about a contract. Our kids deserve better. Y'all had the same tired ass Oasis meeting last night. They have every year going over what they haven't done and what's still not going to get done. We're sick of it. I've been here since before all of it and all y'all. Mister, you here because you trying to be the mayor. Jamila, you got your own agenda. I thought you was about it, but you just full of it and talk shit too. Othore, I don't know what you doing there as president and Hurst, I'm just ashamed of you because I thought she was going to come in here and really do something for the Black kids. And Omar got ran out. McGee, he finally figured y'all out and he had to leave because it's not about the kids. It's about your extra agendas and the BS and enough is enough. We shouldn't have to fight for monies. 26 years. She not to tell you who we are and what we're doing. You know what we do for these kids. You know what all of these parents are.
Our next public comment is Cordell Hindler. Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, so good evening, uh, President Christian, um, board members. Um, my name is Cordell Hindler, um, and I am a community member. So, two things. One, this past Friday evening, I was, I, I tried to go, I tried to go to a football game at high school, but I was denied for the following reason. You have to purchase your tickets online. And I find this very offensive because people like me do not have a credit card. I pay cash going to a football, to a sporting event. And I have done that in the past. So, I don't know how this, this policy came about, so, but I'm angry. Angry that I got denied access to a, because you have to purchase your tickets online. That's unfair. I pay with cash. So I'm asking that the board, do you know, like, look into this matter? Because this not only affects, but affects other, other parents of high school students. So, I'm just asking if y'all can, like, you know, look into it and place it on a future data and that's it.
Our next public speaker is Jean Kinster. Please unmute yourself.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
Good morning, hello, Board and Trustees and everybody. I'm Jean Kinster. I teach at Verdi Elementary. And I just wanted to remind the Board, it was before my time, I was subbing, but I did not come up to West Contra Costa at the time because of the, the strikes that were going on. Back in the day, there were some pretty big striking issues over money because the district was pretty much bankrupt. Teachers took a huge concession in their salary and their benefits. And that's the reason why the teachers are paid so low compared to other districts in the area. And they were promised that they would get that back, that that would come back to them. And here we are, still trying to regain some of that so we could be at least equal with our surrounding peers on the pay scale. I'm hoping you guys will look up the history if you don't know it, or you'll remember that history. Because we do need to do better for our teachers. And even though I was kind of following the strike and I would not cross the picket line as a sub, I ended up working here as a teacher. And I really, really would like to see everyone get back to where they were and not be punished because they gave up some of their salary to help the district out. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Yolanda Williams.
My name is Yolanda Williams. I am the grandparent of Jamari Moore. Jamari attends Bright Future After-School Program. Is there any Bright Futures in the house? As you can see, they are all different age groups. I stand before you today asking you to reinstate their contract with Bright Future. The contract we are asking for is, is essential to the working families. Bright Future enables families to work late hours, to have proper supervision for their children until they are able to pick them up. By doing so, we, the parent, feel comfortable and stress-free knowing that our children and our grandchildren are safe and well taken care of, knowing that they are not a latchkey kid, going home to an empty house after school with no supervision. As you can see, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Bright Future is a key component of our community. Please consider the importance of renewing the contract and the lives it would help in the proc, in the process of doing so. We thank you. We thank you. And please do the right thing and fund Bright Future. Can I get a clap in the Bright Future?
Our next public comment is Maisha Harris Gash. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening. I'm still kind of in recovery mode here. What I will say first is that we need to learn how to have our discourse, what our passions are with appropriate language. We have two high school students sitting on our board. And if it was one of my children, I would be highly offended at the language that was used a couple of speakers ago because of how I speak in front of my child and my children. The reason I called in this evening is that I want to say thank you to those who have poured into me over the last 72 hours. I did not realize that I needed somebody, or more than one, somebody to pour into my cup so that I could continue to pour into others' cups. So I want to say thank you because you did not have to approach me. And these are people that I met at some school meetings and things like that. So I just want to, from, from a grateful heart, I want to say thank you because I really needed that because I do pour a lot out for my students. Second, I want to thank the Kennedy alum that I reached out to in the last 24 hours for bottles of water. Yes, at Kennedy, we have dispensers, but it has been really hot. And in order to keep, I'm not going to deny a student to go get water. And everybody doesn't have a reusable bottle. But that allows them to stay in class and I'm not sending them passes to go out and lose instructional time. So I want to say thank you to the alum who answered my call, answered my plea, and supplied cases of bottled water to my class. And lastly, I had a student come to me the other day and say, Ms. Gash, do you have some deodorant? It was a female. And I'm thankful that she felt comfortable enough that she could come to me and ask me and that most likely she knew she was going to get a yes. So with that being said, and I hope this isn't inappropriate, that I do have a donor's shoes for hygiene kits for males and females because at Kennedy and our community, we do have students who deal with these kind of issues. And it doesn't have to be, okay, and it doesn't have to be embarrassing for them to go to the main office if they can go to a teacher. Thank you for the little bit extra time, everybody.
Our next public comment is Denise Stanton. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, I am here tonight representing Bright Futures as well. My daughter is a preschooler there. And as you've heard, many families do not, oh, essential Bright Futures are to our families. My family is a middle, I'm not a single mom, but we heavily depend on Bright Futures for what they provide for our families. Just like lower-income families need support services, middle-class families do as well. And Bright Futures are one that don't discriminate and they do support us as well. We have heavy work schedules. My husband works till 9:00 PM every night and is unable to get up from school. And so, having Bright Futures there to keep our child until we get there is very important. Having them install values into her, install friendship and unity and teach her a sense of community is very important to us. And so, we are also here asking for you to reinstate the contract with the district because Bright Future deserves it. What they're doing for the community members, what they're doing for families is a necessity. It is needed and it needs to be reinstated. It can't be debatable. It can't be up for question. You guys have to do what's right. You guys have to support the families that are depending on the, that, that Bright Futures provides. Their education system, their curriculum is amazing and they need it. My daughter is four years old and she's already speaking sign language, Spanish and English because of Bright Futures. And so, I'm also here asking that you guys do the right thing and support Bright Futures. They're here to help. We are here to help. We come to these meetings because we need help. And you have a school that is helping. So support them in their aim, in their goals of helping families like ours. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Dylan Rotich. Please unmute yourself.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Dylan Rotich. I'm a 23, I'm 23 years old and I attended Bright Futures Growth and Development Center from the age of two, all the way until I graduated from middle, college, high school in 2017. Bright Futures provided many essential services that made it possible for me to succeed in school. I watched Bright Futures grow from a small daycare to an important pillar in our community with everyone from parents to employees pouring in their effort and donating their time just to allow us as students to have better services and opportunities. This is important because Bright Futures is much more than a service. It's a family. And as a student, I really felt that. I felt safe and a sense of belonging at Bright Futures. And they instilled in me the confidence that I needed to succeed. Even after graduating, they continue to support me and the rest of their alumni. As a student of West Contra Costa Unified School District, I haven't felt nearly the level of support and encouragement that I found at Bright Futures through any other service in my 13-year experience within the school district. That's why I wanted to express my concern and bring to the attention of the Board that Bright Futures isn't receiving nearly as much financial support as it once did from the school district. It's very disheartening to know that the wonderful gift that Bright Futures gives to our community is at risk of being discontinued due to the lack of funding. Additionally, despite the choice of language used earlier, that just goes to show how much we all care about supporting the children. At least somebody cares. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Danielle Garza. Please unmute yourself.
Hello, how you doing? Thank you so much for having us here this evening. I am a parent of a student over at Stewart Elementary, also echoing the DLI program as well as some other concerns going on with the, I guess, leadership of the school. We were not notified as families that the students did not have a third-grade teacher until the day of, and it wasn't even through the school. We were actually notified from another parent. So we were kind of slapped in the face with a big surprise there. It's been frustrating because my kid has been doing very well and has really, really enjoyed school and his education in his time at Stewart Elementary. Unfortunately, this year, he is not excited about school, to say the least. He's very disappointed with everything that's going on. He's been not, I guess, excited about school in any way this year. He doesn't want to go, saying it's been a waste of time. There's not a whole lot going on. I asked him what he's learning in class and he says that he's just getting multiplication ditto's and copies just to go ahead and do stuff that's really easy for him, that he finishes in about 30 minutes and then, you know, he's done for the day. He does say that there's a couple of things. The substitute that has been brought in has been a little bit of improvement. She is speaking to them in Spanish. However, at the end of next week, she will be gone. And what we're looking for is a solution to this. I'm really hoping that this gets addressed because one of the whole reasons why we invested our child into Stewart Elementary is because of the DLI program. It is not his first language. It is a language that we're hoping that he develops. And he has been doing amazing up until this year. And we're really hoping to go ahead and retain that. I'm hoping to hear some positivity from the school board as to how we can go ahead and address this issue and find teachers for the classes that are missing them in both kindergarten, third grade, as well as fourth grade. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Denise Dean Collins. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst, President Christian and Board Trustees. Sorry, you have me with my, with my dinner in my mouth. This is Denise Dean. I'm the principal of Collins Elementary School in Pinole. Boy, it's been hot, right? I don't do this enough and I don't think you hear enough of the positive shout-outs, but I want to send a couple. First, I want to thank, appreciate and celebrate the staff of Collins. They have suffered through classrooms reaching inside temperatures, inside temperatures upwards of 85 degrees. Yet, they've showed up, worked through their lunch periods and made sure the students didn't have to go outside. Collins staff rocks. Secondly, I want to shout out to Melissa Payne, who in the absence of Mr. Freeze, sent 15 fans to the school this morning. It isn't the HVAC that we were slated to get over this summer, but it was a quick response to our need for a solution to this California crisis that is impacting the older schools in the district. We are not alone in this struggle, but we do sometimes feel isolated. Your visits, urgency of response and callbacks mean the world to us. Thank you, staff, Melissa and Jamila. Thanks, you guys. Peace.
Our next public comment is Nisha. Please unmute yourself and state your last name for the record.
My name is Anisha Johnson and I am on representing Bright Futures Growth and Development Center. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. The reason for being on today is just to support Bright Futures. My kids have been there for about three years. I have a child who is 13 and one who is 10 years old. And the reason why I want to express my concern for Bright Futures is that not only do the program provide the kids with just transportation and homework assistance, it's also that they truly are a safe place for kids to develop. Their care is compassionate and it's consistent. Those two things are something that is extremely important, especially for young black boys that I have. There have been times where the kids have been having situations at school like bullying or not understanding information. And they can come to Bright Futures and get clarity and they can come and get support from all of the staff there. Not to mention the ongoing support during the pandemic. They were there. They were providing food boxes. They were providing dinner, fruit, lunch, arts, dance classes. That my kids are saying, mommy, I'm happy. I'm happy here. Thank you for sending me. We need to fund Bright Futures. They need a contract. They deserve it. And most of all, the kids deserve it. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Sparkle. Please unmute yourself and state your last name.
Hi. My name is Margaret McCarty. I'm the parent of a third-grade student at Stewart Elementary School. My student is special needs. When we originally decided to come to Stewart, her doctor said that we needed to put her in a program that, that really challenged her. And they suggested the DLI program at Stewart. We put her into the kindergarten class and she really excelled. She was so busy and learning so much that her problems seemed to go away. She was extremely challenged. We don't speak Spanish at home, so this was a big challenge for her and something that she could do on her own. Then she moved up to the first-grade DSL and the second-grade DSL, which was with Ms. Reyes, who took a, a big interest in my daughter and her special needs. And she learned so much. This, this teacher even came to the house to provide special attention to get her where she needs to be and to keep her on track and focused. It's disheartening when my daughter comes home from school saying that she's sitting in the very back of a class with over 30 students in it, saying that she can't hear, that she can't concentrate. They're not teaching Spanish. She got stuck in a, in an English class that is not challenging her at all. She's chose to sit in the back of the class where she could try to get a little bit of, a little bit of peace and quiet and concentrate. She's not getting any kind of Spanish. She's not in with the substitute that's only going to be there for one week. The, the school has been moving her around from class to class. Sometimes she'd had to move classes in the middle of the day just to, just to be in a classroom. I finally got them to put her into just a single classroom and not move her.
Our next public comment is Jenny Gonzalez. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Jenny Gonzalez and I have a third grader at Elizabeth Stewart School. And that school is dear to me because I attended that school as a little one, not in dual-language immersion, but in English. But to us, our family, it's very important that our kids embrace a second language and grow to have cultural empathy. And it was just really. And it was just really frustrating and disappointing that our son does not have a third grade teacher. Also, um, he has an IEP and being switched from class to class, different languages is really compromising his routine and it's really impacting his desire to learn or interact. And so I just asked the board and the trustees and everyone to um, look for teachers and support Stewart Elementary. I also want to lift up um, the efforts to keep the, the after school program in Richmond as well. Thank you.
Our next public comment is DeAndrea Latier. Please unmute yourself.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, everyone. My name is Dee. A graduating senior at Arizona State University with a BS in biochemistry, as well as a Bright Futures alum and board member. For over twenty-five years, Bright Futures has had a consistent output of successful students. It gives children the opportunity to commune safely and discover talents and interests that may have lied dormant within them as well as aid in academic success. Ninety-nine percent of Bright Futures kids graduate high school and ninety percent go on to attend college or trade school or join the workforce. Sixty-five to seventy percent even come back to Bright Futures to work with current attendees and give back to their community. With stats such as these, it is foolish to allow a pro- to allow a program like this to go underfunded yet again. The newly elected Black Board members that have pledged to work for the black children of their community have decided to put funding toward a program that cannot even proofread their agendas, yet won't fund a program that has already undergone the trial and error needed to to needed to run a flourishing childcare program. To put the money elsewhere would be a disservice to the children in need of the support. If you truly cared about the black children in your community, you would give Bright Futures the funding it needs to support them rather than funding your selfish agendas. Have the day you deserve.
Our next public comment is Ivy Winston. Please unmute yourself. Our next public comment is Christina Samuelson. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Christina Samuelson and uh, my son is Diego Samuelson. He's in third grade at Stewart Elementary. And um, I'm calling for the same reason that I'm very concerned that there is no teacher for the third grade class. Um, he's been in DLI since kindergarten and was excelling. Um, last year he was testing at fourth grade math and really enjoyed going to school and they had an excellent teacher, Ms. Reyes, for the past two years. Um, this year is night and day. He's coming home un, you know, unfused. I ca- I ask him what he's learning. He can't even tell me what he's learning. Um, he's just not excited to go to school at all. Um, I see a complete change in him. They were switching the kids around from classroom to classroom. He was in a first grade class for about a week, um, which was not going well, not being challenged, just given worksheets. Um, I really would like to hear tonight what the plan is. Um, you know, we know that there's a substitute till September twelfth, I believe, but I, I'm, I'm concerned that we're a month into school and they do not have a teacher, so I'm, I'm really hoping that we can hear how, you know, what are the steps that are going to be taken so we can get the kids a permanent teacher? Um, it's affecting their day to day morale and um, that's, that's why I'm calling. Thank you.
Our next public comment is Ivy Winston. Please unmute yourself. Uh, ma'am, you we can't promote you as a panelist, ma'am. Can you try to uh, just unmute?
President Christian, I was wondering if maybe uh, the, the lady in the, in the um, uh, uh, audience would bring her phone and we could hear her through the speakerphone? Um, if that is allowed?
Yeah.
There you go, Ivy.
Hi, can everybody hear me? I'm so sorry. I lost the way on my end. How to unmute? I just want to thank everybody for the Can everyone hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, so first of all, I want to apologize to the parents. Y'all have me come out advocating this way.
Can y'all hear? Talk a little louder, Ivy. I can't get too close to the mic. Go ahead.
Okay, if I'm gonna hold the meeting, I can come in person next week.
Hold on, hold on. Press mute. Now she can Oh, go, go ahead Ivy. You can talk. Oh, go ahead and talk Ivy. Now it's better.
Alright, so if I can get you out.
Yes, yes, they can. Go ahead.
So, so I just want to say this. First of all, thank you all for your patience. So, the parents, myself and everybody else that's out here tonight were advocating for our kids. This is our twenty-six year operation. I did have the opportunity to be a part of the meeting last night. But um, the essence of trying to more but I have to say that we have already put an effective plan that has worked. It has successfully worked for the last twenty-six years, along with the parents. When we started this organization, we
Ma'am, I'm sorry. We can't, we can't hear.
Ivy, I'm sorry. They can barely hear you and we keep getting feedback from the microphone.
We are, we have a, we, the, the horse is an idea, President Christian. If you're okay with it, we could promote her as a panelist for the minute she has left. And then we can unpromote her, but she needs to know that she would be kicked out of the Zoom when we unpromote her.
And our And our last public comment is Lysia. Please unmute yourself and state your last name.
Yes, hi, Board Member. My name is Lisa Vorba and I am here representing Bright Futures. Um, I have a child who's been within this district for the last six years. And uh, unfortunately, we didn't know about Bright Futures. We had an after school program, which was not successful and honestly was not very well ran. And since I found Bright Futures, my child has grown exponentially. I have a younger child that just started kindergarten this year who is very nervous. The people at Bright Futures are not only loving, but they care truly about these kids. Um, without them, I wouldn't be able to work, neither would my husband. Um, just the care that they give them. My youngest has definitely gained a lot more confidence in himself. They give homework help. They also give them life advice. They help these kids learn how to care and love for one another. They truly are community. And I think it's sad that this district is not funding them. I think this definitely needs to be something that is done as soon as possible because we need programs like this. This is a necessity. Just like teachers are a necessity, Bright Futures, Bright Futures is a necessity and we need them in our lives. Thank you.
I want to thank everyone who gave public comment on this evening. We appreciate you a lot and now we will continue to move forward with the agenda for this evening. Now we're going to the agenda review and adoption. Are there any changes in review to the agenda adoption?
President Christian, I apologize. I was wondering if we could take a five minute recess?
Yes.
Can I make a motion and take a five minute recess?
Alright, we need to put a motion. Uh, uh, the motion put to the floor that we take a five minute recess and then we come back reconvene so we can kind of collect online.
Reckler will second.
Alright, it's been moved. It's been second and to the vote, uh, Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Alright, Trustee Smith Fall?
Smith Falls, yes.
Alright, Trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Alright, uh, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
Alright. And I'm a yes and my student trustees, I'm sorry. Uh, took my Trustee Miles?
Miles, yeah.
Alright. Uh, Trustee Sapanya?
Sapanya, yes.
Alright, and it's been moved and and adopted, passed, and so we'll take a five minutes recess. And we will continue, we will proceed on with the agenda for this evening. Now we're going to the agenda review and adoption. And are there any changes? Okay, Trustee Smith Fall?
President Christian, I have a question about the agenda. Action item E five and consent item C six, are they the same thing? And if not, can you tell me the difference? Action item E five, which is Pinot Valley High School Fields, Fieldhouse and Bleachers Change Order Approval and Consent Item C six, which the ratification of the negotiated bond change order, that's the exact same thing when you click on it. Can you tell me what the difference is or why it's in two different places?
Yeah, we do that right now.
President Christian, if you remember in agenda setting, we had discussed to move it to consent. So I think that we accidentally left it as an action item, but it's supposed to be in consent.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi.
But sorry, Trustee Smith Falls, one second. They are just confirming, but that's what I recall from agenda setting.
Okay. Yeah, they are different. One is an action item and two are the same? Or consent? Trustee Smith Fall?
Okay, can I have a, so there are two different items?
Yes, ma'am. The action item is different. It has a monetary value to it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, are there any other changes to the item? Agenda review?
President Christian, I'm making a motion that we approve the agenda.
Okay, the motion to approve the agenda? Is there a second?
Reckler will second.
Alright, it's been moved and the second by Reckler. And now we go to, uh, let me start with the student trustees. Uh, Trustee Miles?
Miles, yeah.
Trustee Sapanya?
Sapanya, yes.
Alright, and now we go to uh, Trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Uh, Trustee Smith Fall?
Smith Falls, yes.
Alright, trustees, uh, Phillips?
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez, so yes.
Alright. And myself, a yes. Alright, the agenda, it, you use pass and now we go to the approval of minutes of August the twenty-four, twenty-twenty-two.
President Christian, I will put forward a motion to approve the minutes of August twenty-fourth as presented.
Okay.
I'll second President Christian.
Alright, second, it's been moved and second, and now we go to the vote. Trustee Miles?
Miles, yeah.
Uh, Trustee Sapanya?
Sapanya, yes.
Alright. Uh, trustee, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Alright, Trustee Smith Fall?
Smith Falls, yes.
Alright, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Alright. Uh, Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez, so yes.
Alright, and myself again. Alright, and the approval of minutes is passed and now we go to the resolution number two, 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 three dash eleven Hispanic Heritage Month and Clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Christian. Uh, now therefore be a resolved that the Board of Education of the West Contra Costa Unified School District proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two as Latinx, Chicanic, Chicanas, Hispanic, Afro-Latinx Heritage Month and encourage all educational communities to commemorate this occasion with appropriate instructional activities. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And now we proceed on and we go to
President Christian, we need a motion and to adopt the resolution.
That's right. I'm sorry. Uh, we need a uh, motion to adopt.
President Christian, I'll make a motion that we adopt our solution number two, 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 three slash eleven Hispanic Heritage Month.
Smith Falls, seconds.
Alright, it's been moved, it's been second. And now we go to the uh, to the vote and start with the student trustees. Trustee Miles?
Miles, yeah.
Alright, trustee Sapanya?
Check, Sapanya, yes.
Alright, trustee, uh, Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Uh, Trustee Smith Fall?
Smith Falls, yes.
Alright, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Alright. All right, clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez, so yes.
All right, and myself a yes. All right, and it passes. And now we move on to see the consent items. Are there, uh, changes to the, to the, uh, consent items?
Yes, President Phillips, I'd like to pull C four for a roll call vote. And I'd like to pull C nine just for a couple of questions, facilities, seven, eleven, committee.
You said C four and C nine?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other, uh, consent items?
President Christian, just to confirm, trustee Reckler is asking roll call vote for C four and then pull C nine for discussion? Okay, thank you so much.
President Christian?
Go ahead, trustee Smith Fall?
I would like to pull C three. And I have a question about C seven. That question can come now or it can come whenever you would like, President Christian. But I would like to pull C three and a question about C seven.
That's C seven, got you. All right, so we have C three, C seven. Okay. All right, so we good, all right?
President Christian, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent, uh, with pulling C four, C nine, C three, C seven.
All right. Is there a second?
Reckler will second.
It's been second by Reckler and now we go to the vote. Uh, student trustee, trustee Miles?
Miles abstained.
All right, uh, trustee Sapanya?
Sapanya, yes.
All right, uh, trustee Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Okay, uh, trustee Smith Fall?
Smith Falls, yes.
Okay, uh, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
Okay, and trustee clerk Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez, so yes.
All right, and myself a yes. All right, and the consent calendar is, is passed. And now we will go to the superintendent report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we pull up the superintendent's report, please? Next page, please. And then the next page. Want to start off by taking the opportunity to acknowledge, uh, those who have passed. Uh, we do have, um, an employment specialist Dana Bates from the Transition Program who passed away. Dana worked in our sped department, our special ed department for many years as a paraprofessional. And most recently as an employment specialist. So our thoughts and prayers go out to, um, her family during this time. Next slide. We wanted to take the opportunity to share with, uh, the board and, uh, the public about work, uh, that we have been engaging in over the summer and it has really been, um, a project that's been led by one of our own that's been working with us. Her name is, uh, Kyra Brown. She actually is in the audience here. So we want to acknowledge her for really facilitating these conversations and we're really excited just to share with you our thinking and, and where we're going, uh, with this. So if we can go to the next slide. And I'll pull this all together in a second. So wanted to start off by just sharing that, um, Ms. Brown started off by leading us in an activity where we were looking at little rocks and medium rocks and big rocks. And the thought was around how can we, um, better um, develop a, a timeline of big projects or medium projects and little projects and put these projects on a timeline so that we know when they're going to occur. That we have a planning stage as well, an execution stage, and a closure stage also. And as you can see, as she led us through this activity, uh, the number of rocks that we came up with, that we wanted to make sure that we are executing, um, very well and also putting on this project management timeline. I think the key piece I want to bring out to you is not just some of the projects that came out that's in the left-hand column, but also, uh, the priority areas. So after we had the activity, she went back and she synthesized the information and categorized it based on the conversation that we had together, uh, me and, uh, Ms. Brown. And we started looking at these priority areas around academics and data. And then culture, climate and development, facilities, financials and budget and safety. And then on, uh, the third column, you could see how we sort of classified these as big, medium and the little rocks. And if you go to the next slide, we'll pull this together and how this all fits in. Now, this is a little tiny, so let me just explain, uh, this to you. So the concept, uh, of a project management timeline is to have major items, um, really before all of the staff, but also before the board as well. So that we know that these things are going to be presented to the board, to the community, uh, those who are listening in a board meeting or work session format. So we know that we've been listening to community members, we've been listening to our labor partners. And we've been listening to board members as well. And some of the things that we have heard, um, all of you say is transparency amongst, um, all of us with the budget. And then conversations around, um, presenting how we're doing as a system overall with all of our students. So with the data and academics and special education as well. Also, there's been conversations, uh, that we've had with the board and the superintendent and others around safety presentations and always, um, providing information to our public and transparency about how we're doing with safety at all of our sites and across the district. And then also there's been conversations around how are we doing with our facilities? What are all the issues? What are the priorities as well? So having, um, this on our timeline also, so we can see and present to the public on a regular basis. Here's what's happening with our facilities and here's our priorities also. So as you look through this, you can see, um, on the left-hand column, the team and department. And again, this is in draft stage. So one of the things that we're planning is you can see what, uh, priority category falls under. Um, financials and budget. So just looking at that, when you can see that there's conversations around four different presentations, or maybe it's not four, maybe it's three, because we have to look at the total number of presentations that we're presenting to the public, um, over the year as well. But conversations are happening right now about a budget university and really engaging with parents and really engaging with the community and labor partners as well. And then board members on, uh, Budget University and that type of training. So there's a lot of thinking around that. There's dropdown menus that let us know when that's going to happen, when it's going to be initiated, when the planning stage is going to occur, when the execution stage is going to occur and when the closure stage happens as well. You also get the opportunity to see who's involved, who's the lead of the project, but also who's involved in planning the project as well. So we want to let you know that that's being thought about, um, and the plan is to bring this all back to the board once it's in, uh, finished form. So you could see the finished product of the project management, management timeline. Other pieces that we're thinking through is safety presentations and whether that's three or four. Those are being thought of. And then the same thing, who's going to be responsible or the lead person of that particular project or those presentations and who's involved in those conversations? And then you can also see facilities, those conversations are happening. So there'll be regular updates throughout the year um, from maintenance and operations, talking about facilities, and then you get an opportunity to see who is part of that planning team that's going to be presenting that project and go to the next slide. Then on this slide, you can see, um, really academics, uh, and data and special ed as well. So again, uh, the conversation is, uh, pretty comprehensive around what those big rocks are. Uh, so more importantly than anything, we wanted the public, uh, and the board to know that we certainly have been, been listening and we've been planning, uh, this has been something that's been happening throughout the summer. As I shared, um, Ms. Brown, Kyra Brown has been leading us, facilitating this conversation with us. And we hope to have this, uh, finalized within the next couple of weeks. The end product will be a timeline, uh, of work sessions that will be, um, available to our board and to our public that really focuses on those big rocks of safety, facilities, academics and data and finances and budget. And the other one was climate and culture as well. So we just wanted to share that piece with the board to let you know that we have been listening and it is coming, um, soon. Next slide. We also wanted to present a COVID update in the superintendent's report. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Booker.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst and esteemed board trustees. I just want to give you a, a brief, um, summary or update on our efforts towards, uh, COVID. We continue to follow the CDPH's guidance with regard to their strategy. Uh, it's the smarter strategy and it's an acronym for shots, mask, awareness, readiness, testing, education and treatment. Uh, and we will continue to follow those guidelines until there is a change. Next slide, please. Tell you a little bit about our testing options. Uh, we by far have the most testing options in, uh, our county. Uh, and I would argue that we have the most testing options in Northern California. Uh, but we continue to do west, uh, weekly testing at all school sites, uh, and we will revisit that on September twenty-second, uh, and evaluate where we're at in terms of that testing. We also do a group tracing process, which is recommended by not only the county but CDPH and that is as needed. Uh, we have three testing facilities, uh, that we operate Monday through Friday from eight to four. And that is at the district office, the Avrato site and the Aloney, uh, site. And that is available to students, staff and immediate family members of, uh, students and staff. We also give out information on how to obtain, uh, antigen, uh, rapid test. Uh, you can do that through www.covidtest.gov, uh, where you can order those tests and they are sent to your residents. We also, uh, give out at-home test kits at our sites when needed. Uh, but we also, uh, distribute those, uh, tests prior to any, uh, major, uh, break, uh, during the school year. There is also available, uh, through Kaiser, uh, where you can get, if you're a Kaiser member, you can get at-home test kits through KP.org, their website. Uh, there is also the county testing location, which is at twenty-fifth and Nevin. They are open Monday through Friday, uh, eight AM to three thirty PM. Uh, you would have to make a, a scheduled appointment, uh, or call them, uh, in order to get, uh, be tested there. They also have a testing, uh, location in San Pablo at Contra Costa College. Uh, and that is open, uh, su- Sunday through Thursday from seven to three and four to seven PM. And that is also by appointment only. Next slide, please. We continue our, uh, although, uh, we have cut, uh, reduced our staff, uh, with, with regard to contact tracing. Uh, we've reduced that number from fifteen to six. We continue to contact trace positive cases. Uh, and that information is, uh, still the same. It is given through our, um, Google form that is submitted to a spreadsheet that the contact traces work from, that is provided by the site leaders. Uh, the contact tracers then contact the positive case and get the information of who, uh, they may have been around or who was exposed. They also have a reporting, uh, responsibility to the county in their spot system. And finally, the principals have the responsibility of sending out exposure, uh, letters to not only the staff, but to their school community. Next slide, please. Like I said, we follow the group tracing protocol. Uh, and school supervisors should notify all students and staff identified as exposed in the group tracing model. Notifications should occur to groups of exposed students, uh, rather than individuals. There is no such thing as, uh, close contact anymore, uh, which was within six feet. Uh, we just go by the motto of, of fifteen being exposed for fifteen minutes or more within a twenty-four hour period. Those exposed students and staff may remain in school if symptom-free. Testing is required three to five days from the exposure date. Uh, the district or, or staff will, uh, coordinate those testing, uh, dates at the site. At-home test kits may also be used for, uh, the group tracing model. Masking is strongly recommended for ten days, uh, from the exposure date, uh, if you were considered exposed. Next slide, please. We also track, uh, COVID positive cases. Uh, so we do that on a daily basis. Uh, our nurses, uh, input this information into a, a, a document, uh, that is provided to me. Uh, and like I said, we not only contact or we, uh, look at those positive cases, but we also look at, uh, reported false positives to us. Next slide, please. And then finally, we have a public dashboard, uh, that, uh, reports all onsite positive cases. Uh, and this, uh, dashboard is, reflects cases confirmed by three thirty every day. After that, uh, the, the positive cases are reflected on the next business day. It is subject to change, however, if we do get a, uh, false positive case. And so we continue to do a, a comprehensive and robust um, process for COVID, um, and next slide. Next slide, please. And that concludes my presentation and I am available for questions if needed.
And that concludes the superintendent report. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. And now we go to questions, uh, so the ten report, so we'll uh, trustee Reckler?
Thank you. Is there any plan? I know that the, that the new retooed boosters were just authorized. Is there any plan to, uh, start booster or vaccination clinics again as we roll into start booster or vaccination clinics again as we roll into the COVID months?
We are looking at restarting vaccination clinics that is based on the site. So the site would have to request that and then the information is given to us and then is promoted once the site has the availability.
Okay, thank you. And then how are you advertising the test, the testing sites and the availability of test kits to the community?
Maybe Ryan can help me on this.
The testing site information is available on the website on the testing site. We made the availability of test kits available. Information about the availability of test kits available to principals through the principal bulletin.
Okay, thank you. At the testing sites. Can you report the level of volume? How, you know, just some statistics on how many are robust, light?
So I'm assuming you're talking about the number of test kits that we give out. So
Well, I'm actually talking about the sites that you have, how many people are rolling through the sites to get tested because you have three testing sites.
Yes. Yeah. And so we do have those numbers. We are testing relatively low at those three sites. The actual numbers, I do have those numbers if you need them.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of comments after.
All right, thank you. Are there any other question? Trustee Smith falls and then we go to trustee Matt.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions and I do have a comment. Mr. Booker, what impact has the heat had on or what impact can heat have on our COVID numbers? Because now all the kids are in one area. So for example, if their room doesn't have air conditioning, then they're coalescing to another room like the library or the gym or what have you. What can that do? What can that do? And how are we mitigating those issues around the heat that we're having the last couple of days? And what we will have for the rest of the week?
I think what's important is that we, although we can't mandate masking, we are strongly recommending that. So that is one part of our strategy. The other strategy, there is no physical distancing, but we are asking the teachers, the staff, the administrators to make sure that as much as possible, they can have in open areas, even though there is heat to put them either in a gym that has more room or NPR or a cafeteria where there is more room for bigger crowds.
And does heat, does heat have any impact on the test? So like if we're at a school sign and we're getting tested, but the room we're getting tested and it's extremely hot, does that have any impact on the results of the test?
So I'm not a doctor, but they have not told me that it, there is no impact or there is no impact on the test or the testing results.
So the company we're using have not said, okay, wait, it's too hot. The tests are going to be devalidated or anything like that.
No, as a matter of fact, I was at Washington Elementary yesterday and they were doing their weekly testing. And there was other than the tester being uncomfortable, there was no reason for or questioning the test results.
Thank you. And then when you're talking about, you mentioned the date of September 22nd, I believe it was September 22nd. There's going to be a review of possibly extending testing on sites. And you're going to, you said that you guys are going to revisit that is, are you using some type of matrix to say, okay, we need to keep it because our numbers are here? Or we need to keep it because this is happening? What matrix are you using to make that decision?
We're looking at test results, the number of actual people testing with LSA. And and then making sure that we are collaborating with our labor partners.
Thank you for that. Dr. Hurst, I have a two questions for you. When it, when we're talking about, we saw the slide and it said little rocks, medium rocks, big rocks. And then it went on a couple of more slides after that. In those slides, it didn't name specific schools or categories of schools, right? So my assumption would be reading that, that all schools all the time for everything. But my question is, are there any breakdowns to like this is for elementary, this is for middle, this is for high school, transition, adult? Or is this going to look over the entire gamut of schools that we cover in WCC USD?
Thank you for the question. Good question. So the thought is that everything that we present over a period of either three work sessions or four work sessions, whatever it's going to be, it's going to cover the whole gamut. So for instance, with academics, the plan would be to talk about all students and also be able to disaggregate the students. So we can see either by race, ethnicity, or by student group, or by special ed, or whatever the issue is, we'll be able to look at all the data and then facilities as well. Then that would go across the entire gamut of the district. But again, so you have to remember if there's three or four meetings that's on this project management timeline, then we would have to figure out what's covered at each meeting.
Thank you for that. And then the follow up to that is the way that you had the categories broken down, academics, facilities, budget, I think, you know, those are kind of what I saw. They're very, they remind me of the board committees that the school board used to have, right? So when we used to lead the academic committee, the charter committee, the budget committee, the safety committee, the facilities committee, when we used to lead those, it was very much engaging with the community and with the public, right? It was very, because we were a small, small but mighty group, right? And then we had our district leadership that would help us with those meetings, but they were ran by the board and we had a lot of community call in, come in or call in and participate in that. My question is, how are we going to ensure that the district led version of that, the district led version of that will make sure that those presentations are not just presentations, but have the girth of community involvement and community voice? It's very important when we're talking about academics, data, budget, facilities, that we have these study sessions or these district led presentations that they're able to hear the questions from the community real time and be able to answer them and have a real level of involvement in that.
Yes, thank you for that. I hear you loud and clear. And I think well, I know that those projects were created based on those committees. So really being able to do that work and present the work and staff doing that. And I hear you loud and clear about involvement of the community as well. So I certainly will take that back to the team and have that conversation. And I know that me and another team member, we're talking about that today, even based on the meeting that we had last night and how do we make sure that we get authentic engagement from the community. So that's something that can certainly take back to the team, but the point is well taken.
Thank you, President Christian. Thank you, Dr. Hurst. Thank you, Mr. Booker. President Christian, I'm complete, but I do have comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And we got trustee Phillips. You have any question? Trustee Phillips.
I do have a question. I know the answer to this, but I'm walking through something. So Dr. Hurst, what meeting did we have last night?
There was a meeting with the African American community and it was a community engagement to talk about our African American students.
Thank you. That's the only question. Whether the discussion last night, did it have anything to do with contractors that provide services to African American students?
Now, the intent of that meeting was really to discuss the positive things, things that didn't go well as well. And it was really, as I led off, to receive feedback from the community on what we can do better and more of for our African American students. So that was really the gist of that meeting.
Okay.
There was also data that was presented as well. So the community or those who were there present could see how students were doing, our African American students are doing in math and English language arts.
Okay. Thank you for that. I am going to reserve the rest for a comment specifically in relation to the meeting last night. African American students and some of what transpired in this meeting earlier in public comment.
All right. Thank you. Trustee Miles.
Yes, I do have a question about the COVID test, like the COVID results data. I understand that last year there were a lot of problems with schools underreporting, seeing as a lot of like on the old websites where they would show the COVID testing numbers would be way different from the students at school, especially since many, since we're getting called out of class for contact tracing. So I'd like to know how accurate is the data that you presented today?
So the information is based on what the site gives us. So if the principal is reporting, and these are for our dashboard, it's only for onsite positive cases. So if there was a case that either was not onsite or wasn't within the infectious period, that would not be reported on our dashboard. So the, the numbers, although may be different than what students may be reporting onsite, it is as accurate as the information that is given to us.
And my second question is, based on the table that you showed us, there's 457 cases within a two week period that were reported. And is that not alarming? I mean, that, that's still a lot of people. That's the size of basically one grade at my school, a little more than that. So would that not be alarming that so many cases have arisen within the first few weeks of school?
So I, I would say this is that you're talking about 54 sites. That includes the auxiliary sites. And if you compare the numbers to last year at this time, the numbers last year were much higher.
I do have a comment, but I save that for that time.
Thank you, President Christian. Thank you, Mr. Booker and Dr. Hurst for the presentation. Dr. Hurst, my questions are for you around the project management timeline. I was very impressed. I was wondering if you could talk about the measurable outcomes of success or not of success that you would implement alongside this plan.
So I would say all of, all of our conversations involve those AMOs or those measurable outcomes. Right now, we're not that far along. We've talked about the AMOs. But I did want to make sure that the board and the community was aware that we're starting to have this conversation. I would expect that we will have a final draft in a few weeks from now. I'm bringing it back to the board.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And I guess my next question would be, how often would you present to the community and the board the, the percentage to completion of these projects?
Good question. So we actually are looking at that now as well. We have 22 board meetings throughout the year. If you consider 180 days, 22 board meetings. So what we have to do is figure out how do we synthesize this? When you saw this, you saw kind of four big rocks. And if you think about four meetings in each of those areas, that's 16 additional meetings throughout the year. There's only 36 weeks in the year. So even with the 22 and the 16, there's not enough weeks to do the presentation. So we have to have that conversation as well. So we haven't quite figured out what that tempo or cadence is going to be in reporting out to the community. We just know that we want to be responsive and to report out on those big rocks. But as I shared, in a few weeks, we'll have more clarity around what the cadence is going to be.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. President Christian, that was my last question.
All right. Thank you. Uh, trustee record.
Are you moving to comments? Though I thought you were going to, I might have preempted you.
Yeah, comments, yeah.
Okay, I just have a couple. The first one is, is I would
Trustee Reckler, I'm so sorry, we're up. We did not see trustee Simpanya. She has questions. Could we?
No problem. Thank you. I can't see them either.
Um, apology that I raised my hand too late. Sorry, trustee Reckler. But I've looked at the social media accounts where WCC USD mainly the Twitter and the Instagram. And when we're implementing these COVID safety rules and all these statistics and whatnot, are my main concern right now is the outreach WCC USD community is getting. And I've looked at the past about four or five months since about May, and there's not been one post on the Instagram about the COVID-19 information. And I wonder if that's possible that we could get more outreach on those Instagram accounts, especially as I'm a student myself, I've talked to other students in my area in my class, and most of them do not use the main WCC USD website and mainly go towards Instagram or stories or posts to find information. And that's why school accounts are such a big deal for us. Especially like class of 2023 accounts. And I wanted to know if that's possible to make posts, make more engagement to the social media part as we're a big district. We have many cities. We have most of Richmond. We have Richmond. We have Pinole, we have Hercules, and there's only about maybe 2,000 people following per account. So I want to find more engagement for the COVID-19 information and make sure that everyone in the area, especially young people, get the information, especially with what trustee Miles, the thing about there not being the accurate COVID-19 cases. And I know that Michael Booker, Mr. Booker, he said that onsite does not count offsite, but I want to know that, make sure that my peers, my parents, my community in general get the information. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the feedback. So I will just say that social media is a key part of our communication strategy. We do post information regularly across our social media platforms. So do appreciate that feedback and we'll, we'll take a look at how we're communicating about COVID safety and we can certainly post more on Instagram. So thanks for the feedback.
Trustee Reckler.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. So I do want to reiterate some of the feedback about how to get tested, testing kits, and then some rules about when you're out, how long you're out, all of those things. I think we need a refresh. Omni channel communication in all its forms, I think would be helpful. The other thing that I would like the district to consider is vaccination clinics. There is a new booster. It is retooled for the new variants. And everybody is kind of taking their foot off this. And I think it's potentially you know, a big sickness waiting to happen. I think we're out of the point where we're afraid where everybody is going to die, but people will get sick and they will miss school. And this is, you know, we need This is, you know, we need to, we need to do our part to be on top of that. I wouldn't leave it just up to the principal, but I would schedule at a high school, this is our day, you know. Open it to the community, do some of the things that we did before. We know what was effective, and I think that we should definitely look to that. The other thing is, I do appreciate Dr. Hurst, your list. It was very small and rolled by very fast, and I'm not sure if all of my rocks are on that list, so I am going to send you more in and. Maybe they're helpful for you. I hope they're there, but that's it. Thank you.
All right.
I do have a couple of comments. One, Dr. Hers, I want to reiterate the fact that we were supposed to have your slides on the agenda. So that we could look at your slides. I just want to make that little reminder so we can have your superintendent report on. The agenda. Also want to make sure that we remember to include or have a timeline when the students will be part, the student trustees will be part of the superintendent report like we've. Done previously. I also wanted to make sure that we are inviting the student trustees. An invitation like the board gets to these special meetings like the one that happened last night, like the ones that are going to happen in the future that they get. Invites to their emails, so they'll know that these are happening. We have to have student voice at the table when we're having these discussions. The other thing I want to make sure is that. Here's my, here's my caution, right? When we say report out to the board and report out to the community. That doesn't let me know that we're going to have engagement with the board and engagement with the community, right? It just means that we're going to be in a listening capacity instead of in an interactive. Having a conversation and making sure that we are engaging the school communities. So. Just around the language, because if we say report out, then that's what we're going to end up doing is just reporting out. But if we say engaging and having a conversation with the board and having a conversation with the community. I don't believe the board or the community want to be passive participants on this train, right? We will all want to be, the duly elected want to be active participants in the community that we serve, deserve to be active participants also. So I just want to make sure that we keep that at high level. And when we're making these type of. Strategies, decisions and policies. Thank you, I'm complete. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, one more thing. Dr. Hurst, in alignment with your presentation tonight, I do want to make sure that we're talking about the big hot sweaty elephant in the room, which is the heat. We need a heat plan or something that goes because it is encompassing academics, facility. Health and welfare, students, teachers and staff, so that falls right along in your big rocks, little rocks. We need a heat plan because heat in California is not an anomaly. It is here always. Thank you, I'm complete.
All right, thank you.
So I want to say a couple of things regarding the report. And I'm going to start with COVID. And spikes. I'm not a doctor, I'm not a public health official. But from everything that I can see. There are spikes when kids are not in school. School is about the most controlled environment. That children and frankly adults could be in outside and perhaps working in a hospital or things like that. So every time we go on break, whether it's summer break or Thanksgiving break or whatever the break is. And particularly if it's an extended period of time. We will always see spikes. Because when kids are not here, they are mingling. Wherever they are mingling, whether it's at the park, whether it's with their friends, whether it's at, you name it, whether it's with family members or extended family. They're mingling and they're mingling outside of the controlled environment that we call school. So when they come back, you're always going to see higher numbers. Until time is able to pass, so they have been in. This controlled setting for a significant or long enough time to mitigate all the time that they were out. So I guarantee you, when we break for Thanksgiving and come back, you're going to see spikes. When we break for Christmas and come back, you're going to see spikes. I have long believed that. If there was a will to do this. And we really wanted to keep children safe, the safest thing to do for them actually would be to run school year round. Now, I know that you have to pay for that. I see a teacher on the audience shaking her head, no. I'm not proposing this, like I said before, I even brought it up, if there is a will to do this. But there's no doubt in my mind that the safest thing for kids and the safest place for them to be is in school. Where it's control, where it's a controlled environment. So I just want to put that out there. We're always going to see spikes, and then they'll always level off after the kids have been back in school. The second thing that I want to bring up. Is the meeting last night. I did have an opportunity to watch. Most of the meeting online. It was a meeting about black students, black families. And it looked like there were more people online, which I was, I'm guilty. Then actually here in the building, it was here, literally here at Dijon. And one of the things that came up in that meeting was the lack of participation in that particular meeting of black parents. And and it was a sparsely attended meeting. I will note that I looked at the district calendar and I didn't even see it on the calendar. So how well it was promoted may have something to do with the level of attendance. But that said, there were a lot of black parents here tonight. And they were a particular group of black parents from a particular area, and that was Bright Futures. And although I do not in any way condone some of the language that was used tonight. It was entirely inappropriate and it was not the entire group of speakers, but. We were all here and heard it, so we saw who did it and and how long it was, although I don't condone any of that. I do think that Bright Futures has a really good track record. And I'm not trying to point fingers, but when we look around this community. It has, as far as programs, after school programs, preschools that cater to. Our target, you know, black, black children. They seem to me anyway to be heads and shoulders above. This issue that they brought up tonight is not new. It's something that's been going on for about a year. And I know it's something that has been talked about offline. I know I've. Roached this with the superintendent multiple times offline, but tonight it bubbled over. So when we are talking about engagement, I would like to know. Why don't they have a contract? And I think they would like to know too, and I don't, and at this very moment, I'm not literally saying. Give them one, but I am asking for an explanation. Because I think at a minimum. Because they have been doing so much work and have been doing it for so long. They they deserve an answer, and I don't know what that answer is. I really don't. So I'm not putting you, Dr. Hurst, on the spot in this moment. I'm not asking you to answer in this moment. I don't think anybody necessarily expected all that to go down in this moment. So, but I would like. To know why they don't have a contract, and I would like them to know why they don't have a contract. And if they are going to have one, when? Because this has been going on for a very long time. It just bubbled over into the public tonight.
I would certainly like to certainly respond to that. So I think. One. I think we have to just kind of speak to what you were just speaking to, sir, before I go into that piece about the contract. You know, since I've been here, we've been talking about core values and how we treat one another, how we speak to one another. And I'm going to lead into responding to your question. How we speak to one another, how we interact, how we behave. What do we believe? What do we value? I've been sharing that with members of the community, members of the board since I've been here. And we witnessed tonight, individuals come in and one in particular. Stand up in front and call the superintendent a coon. That is not okay. And we have to call that out. We cannot dance around that topic. It was not okay. We should not have individuals coming in here with students with little ones. And saying that to the superintendent, and we don't do anything about it. That is not okay. And then to have a conversation about a contract. I think the more important thing right here that I want to share with everyone is what do we value here? We talked about the West Contra Costa Way. Our beliefs, our values. That was not okay, and me as a superintendent, I will not tolerate it. Not going to tolerate anyone coming here calling my staff a name, especially me. I'm a grown man. I'm a superintendent, but I'm a grown man. This is what I will say. Everyone knows me here. If you want to meet with me, there's two people over there that I have a lot of respect for, and that's my assistants. They know how to reach out to those two people and set a meeting with them. Bright Futures could have done that. They could have set a meeting, I'd have had that meeting, and everyone that knows me knows. That if it's on my calendar, I'm going to hold that meeting and have that meeting. That did not happen. This was a surprise. I was certainly caught off guard, unexpected. And in my opinion, very unprofessional. That's not how I conduct business. Everyone knows who contacts me, I'm going to be responsive, I'm going to respond. They could have done that. Why don't they have a contract? There's one, they didn't set a meeting with me. Why don't they have a contract? They could have had a conversation. I would have sat down with them, and what I would have done is I would have shared with them, just like everyone else, you're going to go through the strategic vetting process. And if they would have answered those questions. Then it would have come to the board, just like every other contract. So let's not just deal with the contract. I don't think that's the issue. The real issue is that we have people that are constantly coming before the board. In the board meeting or in different forums, and they're belittling staff and belittling the students. Belittling the superintendent. I'm not going to tolerate it. That's why they don't have a contract, sir.
So, and I agree with you one hundred percent around the language that was used. But just so I'm clear, you're saying that, one. They didn't meet with you about the contract. And two, you're saying that they did not fill out. A, I'm going to use the word proposal, but what's the right word?
It's the strategic vetting process that we have everyone go through, and we've been doing that since the beginning of the years, or.
And you're saying that they did not come, they did not fill out the form for that.
Correct, and they probably aren't even aware of it. And if they would have scheduled a meeting with my assistants, they would have been on my calendar. I would have met them with them, or Ms. Martin would have met with them and shared with them the process. But I I think my point, sir, is that we have to stop permitting people to come in here and just railroad district staff and belittle them. There's a process and there's a way to advocate for. Your organization. And that member specifically did not do it the right way, and we cannot tolerate that.
I'm I'm going to just just say this really quickly, and and I'm, again, I'm not making excuses. And when the particular person was going, she should have been gobbled down by the chair, and that should not have been allowed. So I I hear you. I do think what I saw last night. From the group in general, not this one person, was frustration. Because I think. I know this contract issue with them has been going on for at least a year. And so what I saw tonight, I think, was frustration, and I think that they need to reach out to you. I think they're probably watching. They need to get that meeting. If they did not fill out a form, they need to fill it out.
President Christian, I have a point of order. Excuse me, trustee Phillips. President Christian, I have a point of order.
What's the point of order?
Because this topic wasn't agendized, are we skirting on a Brown Act violation? This is the question. Are we skirting on the edge of a Brown Act violation? I think that this topic should be agendized, because we've already talked about contracts should be agendized, and the matrix used to. To determine what contracts are going to come forward should be agendized. I just want to be real clear, and I just want your opinion on this. Or because this is not agendized, a specific topic, and we have gone into almost debate. On the topic now, because we have almost gone on to debate on this topic that was not on the agenda and then given public. Due process, right, or acknowledgement. I just want to make sure that we are not on the edge, and if you don't have that answer, Dr. Hurst, do you have an opinion on if we should just stop? Maybe put this on the agenda under all contracts that we're talking about, and then bring that back forward, or if this can continue. Thank you. Pardon the interruption, trustee Phillips, President Christian or Dr. Hurst, do you have an opinion on that?
I was just going to say. I'm going to reach out to them. I I don't necessarily. Agree with the way everything went down this evening in the comments. I do believe in advocating for your organization. We do have a process in place. I will reach out to them and share with them the process, and then we can take it from there.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hurst.
Dr. Hurst, I think that that for me is is appropriate, and I I do again want to say. And it is very appropriate in this space to address one behavior that happens in this space. You can't agendize what just happened. Right? So I I do agree with you, and I do agree that it should not have been allowed. That one particular person in general should not have been allowed to proceed the way that she was, but. I think some things were aired out this evening. You are going to reach out, and then, you know, this will be resolved one way or another, but I just think it's important. That whatever the decisions are, that everybody is told what they are, so it is what it is. Right? And then things are not able to linger. So thank you very much.
And trustee Phillips, I agree that behavior should be discussed in this this forum. I absolutely agree with that. I was speaking more to the specifics. And if we can make sure that we agendaize that, Dr. Hurst, while you're reaching out to Bright Futures, please reach out to all those other contracts that were not approved, so they'll know why and how they can advocate. For themselves or come back to the board or whatever the necessary steps are that are in our policy about when a contract is denied. Thank you so much, and I would love that information brought back to the board about those contracts that were denied and the reason why. Thank you. President Christian, I'm complete.
All right, thank you. Trustee Miles.
Yes, this is a bit off topic, well, from what we're just talking about, but I just want to go back to the COVID numbers. I know that I don't remember exactly who, but someone mentioned. Okay, someone mentioned something about social distancing or how they were trying to. Distance in classrooms due to like moving people to cafeterias or like more open spaces. But you also have to realize that there are a lot of people in those more open spaces. Cafeterias are extremely crowded. If you've ever gone to any school site ever. And walked into a cafeteria line, you know that kids are like pressed up against each other sometimes in like big crowds, trying to get their lunch, so that's not really a. Safe distancing site. And same in classrooms, a lot of classrooms are overcrowded, and some people don't even have desks in the classroom. They're like really full right now, so I don't think. That a lot is being done about distancing in general, so I do hope that the board is mindful of that when making their. Finding their data and everything.
Cloak, cloak is that a story?
Thank you, President Christian. Yeah, my comment was actually adding to trustee Miles' mention and trustee Smith Folds. I do think that the heat waves are, are affecting COVID. Just today, unfortunately, because of the Pinot Valley High School issue or under HVAC, which has been fixed, which is wonderful. They had 150 students in the theater. 75 students in the library. We've been at the library, we've held meetings. We social distance and I, I don't think we could fit 75 people with social distance, right? So I think that. During the heat wave. I have really appreciated. What staff has done, the quick turnaround on getting the swamp coolers and the AC units to some of the school sites. And I do think that because of the heat, as someone who suffers of migraines during heat, I know a lot of staff has been out. So when that happens. I would encourage us instead of putting students in theaters to figure out backup plans for those schools. That are very heavily impacted. And I don't want to say close to school because everybody freaks out whenever we say that, but, but we have to, we have to do something different than just putting students in a gym. Um, I know it's hard because we already have however many openings. We have admin insights, principals working in classrooms. But, um, I do think I agree with trustee Miles. It, it, it scares me to put that many students in a small space. Especially when we have spikes. I also wanted to just thank Mr. Booker, your staff, the nurses for all the work around testing around COVID safety. I feel really proud, actually, every time you mentioned, we have more than everybody else. I actually feel really proud about that because I do see us as a. Lighthouse when it comes to safety issues around COVID. Around, um, things that we implement compared to other districts. So I really do appreciate that. I know that we're thinking about potentially. Ending testing or pausing it for time. I would encourage us to ask that decisions made. To keep testing around holidays. I do agree with trustee Phillips that every time there's a holiday, we see spikes for, for reasons. And, and I think that if we have testing couched into that for two weeks after or whatever, um, I wouldn't quite encourage us to think about that. Um, and that we continue to, you know. Do our, our masking. Um, informing our families and students through social media, et cetera. Because I think sometimes after we've gone through something for a while, we start forgetting. But we're still going through the pandemic, right? And we're still seeing cases. I agree with trustee Miles as well, 400 cases. With 56 schools, right? 27,000 kids doesn't seem like a lot, but that's a whole school, right? 400 students is a whole school, right? So I think that even though it's spaced out, it is still a lot. And, and we want to avoid that spread as, as much as possible. So. Uh, I just want to appreciate staff for doing that. And I do hope that whatever we can do around the heat right now. Um, because it does affect COVID. That we do. And, and board, I would encourage us to be careful with our conversations. I did appreciate the Bright Futures conversation, but I agree that we did not agendaize that, President Christian. And we have to be careful to the community, what we show. When we, people come and speak to us, there is a chance for us to respond to the public after public comment. Um, that would have been the appropriate time, not now, uh, because. We could be seen as by laying the Brown Act. So we just have to be careful. And. The, the timing issue, I know we always complain about not finishing our meetings, but it's already nine o'clock and a lot of us have been speaking obviously for a while. So we just need to be watchful. As a board. All right. Thank you so much, President Christian. That's it.
All right. And. That concludes the superintendent report. So now we'll go to E. Uh, E1 action item. Strategic plan update.
All right. Good evening, Board Superintendent Hurst and community. Um, I am privileged to be here with a group of fine leaders from our community. To share with you an update on our strategic planning process over the last year and what's to come. If you go to the next slide. So with me today, um, we have our visionary leader, Dr. Hurst, um, who has. Kicked off this process for us to begin thinking about who are we as a community? What do we value? And how do we define that in ways? Where there are opportunities for authentic engagement, for folks to give voice to the process and make sure that. Wherever we land in our description of who we are, folks feel that they are represented and had voice. I'm Tracy Logan, the Chief Technology Officer, and in this process. I've had the honor of being the cabinet member who's been able to facilitate our guiding coalition. Uh, which we'll talk more about in a moment. And I'm joined here today by Kyra Brown, who was mentioned earlier, who's been an Ed pioneer with our district for the last year. And a key member of our core planning team and instrumental in the logistics and planning for the process over the last year. Also back with us today is infamous Angelica Flores, who was a WCCUSD student, now former student for, former student trustee. And student at Sonoma State. Thank you for joining us. We also have on Zoom, Kristy Lamb Julian, who is an active parent in our district and a key member of our guiding coalition. Thank you for joining us, Kristy. I know you're hopping from PTA meeting to trying to get your kid to sleep. So. Much appreciated for joining us. And last but not least, we have us with us today, Mr. Willie Robinson. Who is the NAACP president, uh, with, with the NAACP Richmond, also a key member of our guiding coalition. Next slide. So I will just talk briefly, what is this process? Why are we doing it? We have engaged in the process over the last year to come together and articulate our shared purpose. Why do we exist? Um, what is the vision, the mission and the skills for graduates when they leave our system? We embarked on creating a roadmap to define our ideal state. And then also to really take stock of where are we in relation to that ideal state? Strategic pro- planning is a continuous improvement cycle. It starts, it continues, it iterates, it's a series of ongoing conversations and calibrations. For us to be really honest about where we are, what we want for students and how we're achieving that, or not achieving that. Next slide, please. So our year one, which was last year, 2122. We did three primary things. We established our goal, which started last fall. In bringing in illuminate Ed Collective to do an equity audit. That equity audit provided key findings and recommendations. Where are our gaps and where should we focus? We use the recommendations from the equity audit as we created a core planning team. To map out and design our series of engagements last spring. And then we formed a guiding coalition, which is a relatively small 13-member representative group of folks. Internal and external stakeholders. So. Union reps from all of our different bargaining units. Um, community members, three members that you see in front of you today. To essentially take all of the feedback that we were getting from our community engagement sessions, synthesizing that. Noting key themes, takeaways, and what seemed to rise to the top in terms of being important to articulate who we are and what we value. Next slide. So what you'll see in front of you on this slide are the three key takeaways from the equity audit. And I want to really highlight number one, the authentic stakeholder communication and engagement. It's a topic that's come up this evening as well. How do we engage thoughtfully, meaningfully? How do we make sure that people know that there's an opportunity to provide voice? That they feel welcome to show up, um, and, and give honest feedback? How do we do that? Respectfully and honestly. And it continues to be a challenge for us. I'll just name that really clearly, but. These three tenants that you see in front of us are things that we held dear when we designed this process over the last, uh, year. So I'm going to turn it over to Kyra now, who's going to talk more nuts and bolts about what that process looked like. Next slide.
Thank you, Tracy. A critical component of our strategic planning process was and is the timeline in front of you. This slide represents the process and steps that were taken from April through September. To actively engage with the community internally and externally. In addition to holding three sets of in-person meetings and one set of virtual meetings. Our guiding coalition met and refined those input from the community. To move on to our mission, vision and graduate profile areas. We also sent out a survey to all community stakeholders. Where we were able to get more input in this process. Tonight, our team will share outcomes from this engagement, but first, Angelica will lead us through the reflections that we did during our process overall.
Thank you, Kyra. One important step for the core planning team. Throughout this process was assessing our progress and reflecting on our effectiveness. To be transparent, we wanted to share a reflection of what went well and what we believe needs more attention as we move forward. Our successes will be shared as glows and areas we need to pay more attention to will be shared as glows. As grows. This side represents what went well during this process. We felt that the in-person session table facilitation, overall marketing and communication. And use of technology were wins during this process. In addition, one great glow was the leadership of the All Student Congress, a student-led group. Who gathered student input and championed this process. Now I'll pass it over to Kristy. Next slide.
Thank you, Angelica. This slide represents growth areas for our process. We hoped that our attendance would have been higher and that attendance would have been more closely matched to the demographics of our students. And the diversity of our stakeholder groups. We struggled with systemizing family engagement from the core planning meetings to the community. Which was also a finding from the audit in the fall. Speaking as a mom of a little human who just started school. And really invested in. The long haul, the big game. I get it. It's hard to find time to find balance. And it's easy to find the negative. What we have right here is an opportunity to make it better together. Finally, although we sent a survey to all families in the district, the responses did not reflect the student group demographics. Of WCCUSD. And an area that Mr. Robinson will address next, in the next slide.
Thank you, Kristy. It's very exciting to me to have to share in this process, which. I buy into 100%. As new leadership come into an organization. I firmly believe it is important to establish the baselines so that. You can flesh out. And determine where the organization really is. So that as you move forward. You put in place. What is now the strategic plan. As the gauge for where you're going to go. And to involve the community in helping you define that. So I commend the superintendent and the board. For this approach, which I buy into 100%. Next slide. Slide 10. Gives a total of 1,605 participants. Who completed the survey. Of the 1,605. 122 or 7.6% were Spanish speaking. As Kristy noted previously, we struggled. To get response that reflect our Spanish. Thus, our demographic of the school district. And it's an area of continued focus. And growth for us going forward. There was some challenging time in terms of the response, so, uh, we had, the time was extended and. We ca- we recovered some of that. As reflected in the total number that we feel fairly comfortable about in terms of reflections. Next slide, please. As Angelica said, student participation was robust in this, in our process. We can see here that 45% of the survey responses were from students. 24% from family members of students. 22 from staff. 7% from community members and 2% district partners. Next slide, please. On this slide, you can see the breakdown of participant by ethnicity. 31% Hispanic. Latino. 25% white. 14% black African American. 13% Asian. 9% multiracial. 7 decline to state and 1%. American Indian or Alaskan natives. Next slide, please. And now. Let me announce to you the final result. In terms of the. Direction. This strategic plan is going. Our top vision statement is empowering learners. To choose their unique pathways. Our top mission statement is to empower students with skills necessary to choose their own path and passion. With courage and confidence. Our top four grad profile skills are. Innovative and critical thinkers. Health, mind and body. Skills, communication and collaborative, collaboratives. Responsive citizens. Tonight, we are asking the board to approve and adopt our vision, mission. And graduate profile skills so that we may begin to internalize this call to action. And organize our system around it. But first. I'm going to hand this over to Superintendent Hurst. And he's going to walk through the details of our next step. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Robinson. I appreciate you, sir. Also appreciate all of you have been participating in the strategic planning process in year one. If we can go to the next slide. So I wanted to share with you, there's been a tremendous work happening for year one. Um, I want to go over with you year two and I've. Talked about this before. I want to go over this again. Uh, year two. Is really going to be, um, once the board approves or if the board approves these statements. There has to be a, a point where we unpack. Um, these statements. So you hear. Unpacking, implementing the mission, the vision and graduate profile. We want everyone that comes into our organization. To understand what those words mean. So that's the importance of unpacking. You also see here, uh, vetting organizations to support. Our initiative around equity. So we have a guiding coalition. What we want to do is have equity-based organizations, you funnel through the guiding coalition. And they're going to really, uh, vet these organizations and engage us in our next level of work. Which is what you see under number three. Some of the next level of work that we see happening, uh, in year two is our equity core values. And again. There's that word core values that you've heard me talk about so often that needs to happen. Um, our equity statement, our anti-racist statement, but also. Work that need to happen with each department in those conversations. How does HR live and act, uh, to achieve our vision as well? Next slide. And then we want to share with you, um, here's, um, our WCCUSD emerging priorities. And we want to talk about how we're going to align these as well. So our emerging priorities are equity. You've heard me talk about that. Our mental health. And then you've heard us and others mention the West Contra Way. A West Contra Costa Way. And really, uh, in this portion, we want to look at. What is our stance on literacy and what is our stance in the district on numeracy? what is our stance on literacy and what is our stance in the district on numeracy? Next slide. So as we think about each item and we focus on equity, and we look at those components that came out of the equity audit of authentic stakeholder communication, attention to equity, access and achievement, and universal systems. And just focusing on equity, this is what I mentioned. We're going to be really working to make sure that we collaborate with the unions, with our stakeholders. We're going to outline a three-year training of staff and students and families and what it means to ensure equity in our system. We also, as I shared, want to develop and unpack our equity core values, our anti-racist statement and our equity statement. We want to do this with all stakeholders, internal and external. And then under area of equity, access and achievement, we want to build a project management timeline, and you've heard me talk about that in the superintendent's report, and making sure that we have benchmarks around equity, access, and achievement. And under universal system, structure, and alignment, you've heard the term siloed efforts and departments. We really want to eliminate that in this area around equity. We want to also utilize our executive directors when they're doing their walkthroughs and their site visits and using that data from their site visits and having an operational cabinet meeting and really focused on how we can support instruction on the ground and increasing student learning. Next slide. And again, in this component, under mental health, we really want to focus on authentic stakeholder engagement and collaborate with the district's guiding coalition and identify mental health partners to support the expansion of services to our staff, students, and families. There was a school that we visited with board members, El Cerrito, and they have a state-of-the-art health department. And they're actually providing these services, vision services, screening, hearing, dental as well, mental health to our students, and we want all of our students to be able to have access to that. And we want to be able to partner with those in the community to be able to provide that to all of our students. And that's where number two comes in, ensure access to mental health services as well, that they're equitable for each of our families or schools. And then under universal system, structure, and alignment, creating a systemic map of resources available to each school, including directions in multiple languages. And we know we have some of that already, but we want to expand on that. Next slide. And then the West Contra Costa Way and literacy and numeracy. Under stakeholder communication, again, we want to collaborate with the unions and our stakeholder groups. And we want to be able to implement study sessions highlighting best practices in literacy and best practices in numeracy. And under equity, access, and achievement, we're doing some of this now by using universal screeners and walkthrough data to provide initial data on our progress. And then under structures, systems, and alignment, again, we want to collaborate with the unions and stakeholder groups and identify grade level teams tasked with mapping K-12 relationships between content standards, the graduate profile skills, and assessments. In the next slide. And what we're really asking for our board to approve, and President Robinson has already shared that, we have three statements. Before you have our vision statement that we're asking for board approval, our mission statement, asking for board approval, and then the top three, four skills that came from our graduate level profile, we're asking for board approval as well. I think that concludes our presentation, and at this time, we'll turn it over to the board president for questions.
All right, thank you. And one.
President Christian, I have a point of order, please. It's probably too late now, but for all of this presentation, there's been a black bar at the top of the presentation. It is now gone now that all the faces are up, but if somebody might take a look, because the titles of the slides could not be seen. Thank you.
Yeah, I noticed that as well, Trustee Reckler. I think what's happening is on the screen, the bar is showing at the top, and that bar just needs to be moved down. It's not actual in the actual presentation. But that bar just needed to be moved down.
Okay, yeah, I didn't want to interrupt you. Just wanted to.
No problem.
All right. Christie Miles?
Hi, I do have a question about the graduate profile. I know that I was one of the people who were, was giving feedback on the profile, and I know there's like a jam board or something, if I'm not mistaken. I was just wondering, was it ever revised? Because there was a point where people were giving out feedback about how they wanted things to be specific, like the goals on the profile to be specific and like have step-by-step information about what the exact plans for the district were. So was that ever done?
I can take a stab at answering your question. I want to make sure I understand it. So you were part of a feedback group of students on the graduate profile. And I know a lot of questions came up, and maybe Angelica, if you want to chime in too, feel free, around. So great if we come up with these skills, but what does implementation look like? How, how do we, how do we evaluate that we're seeing it in action or not seeing it in action? Having a couple of words on the slide sounds good, but, but really spelling that out in precise terms. That's your question?
Yes.
Okay, so that has not happened yet. This was really the first step of the process of defining what are those top four skills? The next part is what Dr. Hurst referred to as unpacking. So what does it mean? What does it look like? What does it look like for a younger elementary student versus an upper elementary student? A middle school student, a high school student, et cetera, because it will look different depending on where you are in your educational journey. So that's really the next step of this process.
So in approving, like if we were to approve these visions and goals, we would be doing so without actually having a step-by-step plan?
Yep, you would be approving the overall. This is the North Star of where we're going, and then what we would do is come back to you. Again, this is an iterative process, so we would come back to you a number of times with more fleshed out. What does this mean? And what does this exactly look like? And how are we measuring it?
All right, thank you.
All right. Trustee Smith Poe?
Thank you very much. Thank you, Guiding Coalition. Thank you for the presentation. Dr. Hurst, I know that both Trustee Reckler and I were interested in being part of the Guiding Coalition, but that never really came to fruition. So I do want to just put that out there, that we wanted to even be silent participants to be part of the coalition, because again, being wanting board members to be active participants in what's happening in the district and what decisions are being made. I also want to be clear that right now we have about 78 attendees, which is probably more than we had at all of those meetings, right? So this would have been a prime opportunity to have public comment after this presentation, because you would have been able to elicit more information from a broader range of the community. 78 people were, is about double or triple what we had in some of those meetings, okay? We did have a lot more people attend on Zoom versus in person, but I want us to make sure that we take every opportunity to engage the community, and tonight would have been a perfect time to have public comment after this presentation. Also want to, I'm sorry, this is questions, not comments. Pardon me. Let me get to my questions. What was the threshold? What was, this goes to what I was just talking about, Dr. Hurst. What was the number threshold that we used to say, okay, we hit engagement? Right? Because we had about 1,600 people respond on the survey. That's overall in the, the district that we have, and we have a very large district up in the thousands, right? So up for thousands. How do we know that we hit that threshold of engagement? How do we know when we were at the meetings in person and on Zoom that we hit the threshold engagement, engagement that we can stand in front of the community and say, we heard your voice? Or we heard voices? That's my first question.
I'm not sure if there was a threshold and maybe if Ms. Logan, if you know if there was a threshold, but what I can share is that we sought out to reach everyone, and I think you're probably aware of what we tried to do. We made it available to anyone who wanted to participate, and we utilized a number of strategies. I think I was talking to the student trustees even today, and I said, we're always open and willing and welcome to listen to additional strategies and what we can do to truly and authentically engage. But you saw us along the way take a step back because we didn't feel that it was enough engagement, and we didn't have enough feedback. But I do know throughout the summer, we were able to double those efforts significantly, and you saw the, the data 1,600 or so. But we can't, I can't say that there was an actual number or threshold that we were trying to reach.
Thank you for that. Ms. Logan?
Yeah, just to add to that, we didn't have, as Dr. Hurst said, a specific threshold number. What was interesting, though, is that when we first deployed the survey, we got 600 and some responses. When we deployed it again, we got 1,000 additional for a total of 1,600. But the interesting part was that this very same top vision, top mission, top four graduate profile skills were the results of both, whether it was 600 folks or 1,600 folks. So that also led us to believe that we were having some consensus around what community was, what was resonating for folks and the most compelling.
Thank you so much. And I think that as both of you know, Dr. Hurst, being an educator, you know that one of the most critical times to get families engagement is that first back-to-school night, right? So that back-to-school night is a prime opportunity from elementary all the way to high school to have families engaged. Let me go back to the question. We, my second question is, we had Equity and Diversity PDs a couple of years ago. Every Friday, we had teachers and staff that would participate in our race and equity professional development. My question is, how, have we looked at what came from those professional developments? What changes were made because of those professional developments? And if there's anything that we're keeping and implementing from this point on that came from the race and equity professional developments? Have we looked into that?
I think I am. When I first came here as a superintendent, I looked at all that was happening around equity. I think the goal right now is to establish what that organization is going to be and to start that conversation. So that organization will actually start the conversation with everyone. So everyone gets to participate. So it's not the superintendent or the guiding coalition are just making this decision on what's going to happen around equity in our district and our community. It's really an us conversation. So that means it could be inclusive of what we were doing in the past. So it's about hearing people's voice and having them to participate and share with that equity organization.
Thank you so much. And my last question, because I want to save time for my colleagues, and the other two questions, Dr. Hurst, I will put in my comments, so you will hear them as comments. My last question is, what are we doing to increase parental confidence around filing Title IX, around filing uniform complaints? Are we looking at our uniform complaint and adjusting it at all into our mission, vision, and what we want for our graduates? Are we looking at that at all? All of that plays into it. Because if we know what we want, but we don't know, have a, a way of saying this isn't working, then we really silo that information. So if we don't have complaints in a Title IX office that match up to, okay, wait, does this look like what we're saying? Then we're really doing a disservice to the entire operation. So have we looked at that? That's my third and final question.
No, but I've taken note of that, and I'll share that with the team. Thank you for sharing that.
Thank you, President Christian. I'm complete. I just have comments.
All right, thank you. Jesse Phillips?
Thank you very much. I want to ask some questions around the vision and the mission. So is there a reason why in the vision, we're using the language learners, so empowering learners? And then in the mission, we're saying to empower students. And I understand we're talking about the same people, but why are we using different language to describe those people?
I think what I can do is probably talk a little bit about that process. This is really a community conversation, and I think starting from the beginning, it really was based around watching a series of clips, engaging in conversations with students, and then really putting all the words together and then wordsmithing. So really, it was a conversation that was generated from all those individuals that were involved. And so when you look at the conversation that happened with the vision, that was a group of individuals that put that together, and then the guiding coalition synthesized everything, brought it back for the next meeting. And the mission was, could have been different people as well, but they still had access to all that information. So they still had access to everything that had transpired before the vision. So it was really generated based on the groups that were present. So that's probably why you see the difference in some of the terminologies or. Is there a and I'm asking you, I'm asking folks in the audience who are presenting, is there a, a preference? So like where it says to empower students, and then above it says empowering learners. Is there a preference as to which term you would like to use? Go ahead, sir.
Participating in this process was kind of interesting with the number of persons and the opinions that was arising in terms of language and definition. And some of the groups that are participating in was that we were trying to get to something that fairly represented the students in a way in which we thought it was clearly articulating what we were trying to do. But it can be somewhat subjective, I suppose, subjective, I suppose. But the language or the words that we use, many times, we went over and over them many times and finally concluded with something that we all could generally agree to.
I'm not trying to be labor, but so like, for example, you go to a school site and they call the students scholars, and you go and they call them students. I'm just saying, this is a document, a cohesive document. Is there a word? And I'm not even trying to pick the word. I'm just asking, because I'm seeing inconsistent, is there a word you prefer? So, so I'll say it this way, sir. There is certainly a word that I prefer, and that would be scholars, but let me just share this, that for me, this three or four month has been a, a process, and you had a number of people that's been involved. I think what we have done here is bring the statements to honor the process, and I will say that there's, there's probably some feedback that you have in mind, and I know that another board member has provided feedback as well. But what I shared is that I think we're willing to listen to the feedback, but also I think that to honor the work and the process, that these are the the statements that have been presented by the people that's been involved. But then the unpacking of those statements is when I believe that feedback would come in. So if there's feedback from a trustee, or if there's a word that we should consider, then that would come back to us, and we are saying, well, here's some feedback. Well, here's a, a term, or look for consistency. Then that would go in that process, and we would wordsmith and unpack it and bring it back to the board. But again, sir, this, this, the statements were brought as they are because it honors the work of the group over the past few months. I got it. So you just wanted to give us it unchanged the way they presented it? Exactly, sir. Okay. Exactly. Okay.
All right, thank you. Trustee Reckler?
Thank you. I want to thank the coalition and everybody that was involved. I certainly went to his meetings as well. Thank you. I want to thank the coalition and everybody that was involved. I certainly went to his meetings as I possibly could. Um and there was a lot of really high quality work and discussion in those meetings, so I really do appreciate it a lot. And the synthesis of putting it back together, so I realize all of that. Um, I also want to say that I agree one hundred percent with every word the trustee Smithfold said. Especially around us wanting to be more intimately involved in this process. I have a lot of experience with this. I never wanted to take over your meetings, but I wanted to be a little closer in, so I appreciate that comment. Um, and so tonight, I'm going to give you some of my feedback that. I've been able to give for all these months. Um, the first thing that I'm curious about is, do you have any data or was it recorded? Um, some subdata um around the involvement of special ed families. And about the involvement in the process of English language learner families.
I believe so, but I don't have that on hand, so I'll have to get back to you.
Do we believe that these subgroups, which are quite large, were robustly included in the process and in the survey? Do we feel that their opinions, values, what their hopes and wants for their children are included?
So I would say overall for English language learners and families. That overall, there is an underrepresentation of. English language learner families, both in the in-person sessions, certainly in the in-person sessions, slightly higher in the virtual session. But even on the survey. So overall, um, I would say that the data of participation doesn't line up. Perfectly with our demographics. Um, it's definitely an area of of improvement for us and for focus. And I can't tell you right now without looking at the the data around special education families, the level of involvement.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next question is on these three statements. So. And maybe I need some correction on the process, but when I look at these, these are statements that I am seeing on our website. I'm seeing in literature, I'm seeing it when we send out newsletters to the community, I'm seeing. Marching orders. Is is that is that correct?
Absolutely. I mean, I would say to Dr. Hurst's point earlier, I don't think we should put these on T-shirts just yet. Because part of the unpacking process will help us if we need to fur- further refine. Language for consistency or what have you. So I don't think they're going on T-shirts just yet, but that would be. Yes, these are the statements that define who we are, that we lead with.
Okay, so I'd like to start with the graduate profile, and for three of them, I kind of have. A vision and I can see where these things are going. Around innovative and critical thinkers and what the subgroups might be under those or the supporting sentences or, you know, whatever. That ends up the tree, whatever ends up. Skilled communicators, I can figure that out, and collaborators, responsible citizens. The one where I'm kind of. A little lost on is healthy mind and body. And it feels to me like something might be missing from this, because when I look at healthy mind and body. The way it's written just now with those four words, I'm having trouble. Getting a picture in my mind, and so I'm going to kind of give the answer ahead of time. Is it something like healthy mind and body advocates? Or is it? How I like, I think it might need a bit more to come into focus.
Yeah, I think some of this goes to trustee Miles's question earlier about. Unpacking and further defining what this means and what it looks like, but essentially where it came from, I believe. In the community conversations, we were looking at graduate profiles from other places, and I think healthy mind and body came from Davis. I want to say Davis Unified. I'll have to go back and. Double check if you remember. Um, but it is essentially about, it it is about one having health, healthy mind, healthy body. It was really stemming from mental health needs, um, the importance of taking care of oneself and being. Healthy, um, both physically as well as mentally. And I'm gonna see if any of my colleagues want to add just, yeah.
As a part of that conversation, there was some leaning toward uh the hungry child. Or the unhealthy child in an environment, trying to learn, and they're being distracted because they're not healthy. That's why. Uh I think what I drew from the conversation we were having around this had to do with the, I guess, the total embodiment of the child. Or the learner in the environment of learning, so that you don't have these distractions that comes from health issues. And physically being. Uh actively involved in strengthening yourself physically.
I would also add that the graduate profile, we would like to use that to reflect what our students should be or. Or strive to be when leaving the district, and in our planning meetings this spring and in the guiding coalition conversations. Health, mental health, emotional health, well-being in general was often verbalized from parents, from students. And that information was represented in the data as well, so that's why this was a skill that was highlighted tonight.
Okay, and I I one thousand percent support this. I'm not saying I don't support it, or it shouldn't be here, it's not important or anything like that. It's just the way that it's written here feels like it's missing something, like you should be always advocating for your own. Healthy mind or body or somebody else's, or you know, like, it just feels like there, there's just something. I get the rest of them. This one, that just leaves me a little a little questioning. Um, I do have some comments on the empowering learners to choose their unique pathway. I do agree with trustee Phillips on. We have students in one place and learners in another, and I think that should be. Uh thought through to figure out, is there, is this the same thing? Is it different? Is, you know, I I think that. Or are, is the mission the students, but the vision that they become learners? I mean, I think there's a, there's some more. Um, work that needs to go there, and then I have some rewrites that I would like to give you for the vision. That I just like you to consider to make it a little more concise. I don't know if you want them now or in comments. It's for the board.
I think you can take them um during the comments, trustee Reckler. That's okay.
Sorry, that was in comments?
Yes, ma'am. Or e- either way, we'll take the feedback either way.
I could save them for comments.
Okay.
Okay.
Jesse Sapania.
So I am reading under the systematic mental health effort. And when it comes to training counselors, are you going to get feedback from students about their current counselors? And how they support them in terms of, let's say, college readiness, mental health. Getting the resources they need, because I know at middle college, there is an extreme lack of solid mental health. Counselor support, and we do have the right institute there, but it wasn't reliable, and we were also online, so it made it hard for communication. So will students be included when it comes to? Sorry, when it comes to getting feedback about current counselors, if there needs to be a counselor change, if we are training counselors. Will student opinion, teacher's opinions, parents of students be included in that feedback to? When it comes to selecting counselors, training counselors, and overall, just the mental health section.
Thank you, trustee Sapania. So what I think about when you're asking that question is. Um. What I was describing at the very beginning is how all of this kind of plays out. So we're bringing. Like a draft of the vision statement, and we understand with the feedback that we're going to receive, that we're going to have to go back and. Have additional conversations and refine. The next layer will be um unpacking that. So looking at these statements. Defining each word, uh refining as well. Um, and then possibly coming back also, but then there's a whole other layer that I was speaking about, and that's how. How do we behave or act to achieve the vision? So what are the conversations that we're having with human resources, or what are the conversations that we're having with our school leaders? To make sure that everyone understands the vision, they understand the mission, the skills as well for our students. So how do they behave? So I think what you're saying really goes into that piece about. Those conversations that we're going to have at the next level after we unpack it, and we're saying. Um, how is everyone at the school site going to act? Um, to achieve the vision. So I think that's when we have the conversation about um counselors and. Input from students and input from families as well. So how do we act? So that piece is coming.
Thank you, Dr. Hurst. I also have one more second question, if that's all right, before going on to comments. But when it comes to collaborating with union and stakeholder groups. To create teams, K twelve teams, to kind of dwell with the relationship between the district and students. I believe because when I was part of the ASB and after. Agreeing to terms for when I become the student trustee. That we only received an email to the student trustee. To spread the word of the graduate profile survey, the one I got fifteen eighty responses, fifteen hundred eighty responses. And we were told to spread the word just from four people. I believe that for outreach for future surveys. We should also spread the word to principals, because at that time, when I received that email, the principal was already. On a vacation email, so she cannot reply. I cannot. Spread the word out further, and I believe that if we go in further. And contact student councils and individual. Old, and I believe that is a lot of work to take on. But just even contacting the principal separately instead of just a student itself can make a lot bigger difference in more diverse outreach. And response in these future surveys.
I'll just say thank you so much for that feedback, and I think that's uh one of the things that you and I and trustee. Uh Miles was talking about this afternoon about um your voices and giving us feedback on what we can do better. Uh to do outreach, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, and that's all the questions I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, President Christian. I just wanted to point out it's nine forty, so we have to extend the meeting um to make sure that we finish our items. Um, so I was gonna make a motion for extend, but I wanted to ask Dr. Hurst if there was anything we could table to the next meeting. That is not completely essential for tonight, like the FPM or the. Okay, uh, Dr. is saying that the two discussion items could be moved to the next meeting. Um, so I'll make a motion that we extend our meeting until we are done with all of our action items and the consent items that were pulled.
All right.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, would you agree to a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Um, all the action items plus the consent items that were pulled and timed comments from the board. Including the student trustees, one minute, two minute comments from the board.
Uh, yeah, I'll accept it with two minutes each. Thank you.
Then I would second your motion.
Sorry.
Trusty Reckler.
President Christian, I'd like to put a motion, another motion on the floor, is that the meeting ends at ten thirty.
Uh can you repeat that?
I'd like to put another motion on the floor, and that is, is that the meeting ends at ten thirty.
Okay, so. Trustee Philip.
I'm gonna second it. I actually think we could finish at ten thirty.
Okay, so we'll go to trustee Reckler.
President Christian, point of order, I think the students vote first.
Okay. Uh, then we start with the students. Uh, trustee Sapania. All right. Trustee Sapania.
Sapania, no.
All right, trustee Miles.
Miles, no.
All right. Uh, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
All right. Trustee Smith Fole.
Smith Foles, no.
Uh trustee. Uh Philip.
Yeah.
Uh trustee, uh.
Thank you, um, but no.
All right, and I will know. That one fails, and now we go to the the other one. All right, um, motion, uh. Go to me, um. The student trust trustee Sapania.
Sapania, yes.
Trustee Miles.
Miles, yeah.
All right. Uh trustee, uh Reckler.
Reckler, no.
Uh trustee Smith Fole.
Smith Foles, yes.
All right, trustee Philip.
May.
Uh, trustee Clark Gonzalez Hoi.
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
All right. And, I mean, yes. So the motion passed.
Thank you, President Christian. Um, going back to the item, I move that we approve that WCCU has the vision, mission, and graduate profile as presented. And I also have a couple of comments after.
All right, it's been moved. Is it a second?
I'd like to make another motion. Uh, and that motion is that the board members give their feedback to the committee. Uh, and so they can go back and work with the feedback and then present. Uh, basically a a second draft, or they decide to present the exact same draft, but that they take the feedback and. Come back.
Reckler will second.
President Christian, I believe three motions can be put on the floor. Is that accurate?
Uh, yeah.
I would like to make a motion that we take this item and we uh have it presented at a retreat, so the board can have an opportunity to talk about each area. Come up with what we want to present back to the superintendent, so he can take back to the guiding coalition instead of having. Like five of us truncated, we come together as a retreat, during a retreat, have a conversation specifically about this topic. And then have a summarized version, Dr. Hurst, go back to the guiding coalition, so they can then look at our. Feedback from one voice, right? Not individual board members, but our feedback as a board.
Uh trustee Phillips.
Uh trustee Smith Foles, um. I think it's a, I think it's fine to to discuss this as a board. At the retreat, and to have a retreat, I actually think it's a good idea. And and I actually think that when we're talking about the the responsibility of the board. Being to give direction, this is sort of like the ultimate. Direction, right, is is helping to shape while voting on what our actual mission and vision in graduate profile is. So I think this is worthy of a of a separate discussion by the board. Would you be opposed to? Actually, both.
Would you be opposed to actually both? I mean, because they are working as a coalition, so people have feedback. Um, or maybe when they do their second round, maybe we can take their second round um, to the retreat. Would, would that work? I think there's a way to do both.
I would not be opposed to having both suggestions put forward. So, uh, board, let me just make sure I understand, trustee Phillips, allowing the board to give individual feedback, also allowing the board to come together to have a full discussion about this very important topic, and then having that feedback get given back to the guiding coalition as one voice of the board. The board believes or the board wants, the board is suggesting. Is that accurate?
I, 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 I would like to just tweak that just one little bit, because I, I actually believe in my heart that the final version of this is, it's actually the board's decision. So ultimately, um, I do think we do end up speaking with one voice. Hopefully, it's one voice. At least it'll be a hope. Um, but yes, I, I don't have any problem with giving feedback in this space. Um, and I don't have any problem with us discussing, you know, together as a board retreat. But I just wanna clarify that in my opinion, right, that ultimately this is the, the board's decision, not the decision of the coal, of, of the coalition or anyone else. Um, and so everything that's being given to us is a recommendation. And I know that the superintendent is using words like feedback, but it's really ours because we're the, we're the board. Um, so I just wanna make sure I'm clear about my opinion or about on that. But, but yes, there's not any issue with ultimately the board saying this is what it is because our function.
Okay, so let's stick with what we really one hundred percent agree with, so we can get a second. So we both agree that the motion could be that we listen to individual feedback and we have a discussion as a board. Full stop.
I have no problem with, yes.
Okay, that's my motion, trustee Christian, or President Christian, and I think I get a second from trustee Phillips.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. And we go from there. All right, we go, we go to the vote. Oh, comments? Any comments? Trustee Reckler?
I think that is an excellent solution.
All right. Now we go to the vote. Uh. Clark Gonzalez Hoi?
Sorry, President Christian, I just wanna clarify, if we vote, we don't end the discussion. We would get then get head into feedback about this at this moment, or would this end the discussion? And we would move to the next item. I guess I get a little confused.
Trustee Phillips?
So no, you would get, if this passes, you would give your feedback now. And then they would go do their work and they'd have some other version or what, whatever they're gonna come back with. And we would have a conversation about that as a board, uh, at, sounds like a retreat.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
All right. Uh, trustee Reckler?
I would also like to clarify that tonight is not the only time we could give feedback, like after listening to all of you and I marinated for a while, if I came up with something else, I could email it in or something.
All right, so now we go to the vote. Uh, trustee, you start with that student trustee, trustee Zepania?
I'm sorry, just to clarify, what is this motion again?
The motion is just, uh, for the board to give feedback to the coalition, um, and for them to take the feedback back to their group um, and to come back to us. And they may present the exact same thing, they may present something reworked, I don't know what they're gonna present. But after they come back to us, that we will take that work and basically have a, a retreat and, and talk about it as a board together.
Hey, thank you. Simpania, yes.
All right, trustee Miles?
Miles, yay.
All right, trustee, uh, Reckler?
Reckler, yes.
Trustee Smith Foe?
Smith Foe's, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
All right. Uh, Clark Gonzalez Hoi?
Gonzalez Hoi, yes.
All right, and I mean, yes, on that. All right. Comments? Any comments? Clark Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you, President Christian. Um, first of all, I wanna thank the coalition, uh, thank you for all your work spending tonight with us as well. Uh, I know it's been a lot of nights, so I appreciate all of, all of you for, for everything that you've done this past spring, Dr. Hurst. Thank you. Um, a couple of things as feedback. Um, I really appreciate, uh, the words, the vision, the mission, I don't have any problems with that. Um, the, the piece of feedback that I, they wanna give was, uh, responsible citizens. Um, the word citizen has a connotation for a lot of people in different communities. And maybe it speaks of, you know, the lack, the difficulty of getting some of the Spanish speakers, obviously, at these meetings. Um, it is in a lot of missions and graduate profiles throughout the state, right, and throughout the nation. So, so I would just ask, um, if the coalition agrees, because I don't want it to just obviously be just us uh, in collaboration with the coalition, if we can find a different word for citizen. Um, because I know it can, um, for me, it, it, it right away makes me think of different things that I don't think we're trying to portray in, in, in our graduate profile. Um, so, so that's really the, the only thing that I, that, that really came up to me that I struggle with. Um, but I am really looking forward to the next step. Um, it's the, I think the exciting part of the work, I mean, this is great, don't get me wrong, and all the work that's gone behind this, it's awesome. Uh, the next part of the work, the measurables, the, the really the goals, um, uh, is, is, is really the exciting part of this work. Um, I just hope that as we lead into that, heading to that work, that is with high expectations. Um, that as our student trustees remind us that we are ensuring that we are tapping on our students um, to unpack this quite a bit. Um, I think that we, we have to utilize our biggest resource, which are our teachers, right? To have conversations with our students in the classroom. Um, especially our, our, our ethnic studies classes, our, uh, academies uh, would really probably be able to participate and, and provide a lot of feedback and information on this. So I just wanna make sure that we have a lot of student involvement, uh, as we head into the next piece. Um, but I just wanna say thank you for, for all this work and, um, the rest of it, to me, it, it looks fine. I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing what my, rest of my colleagues have to say. Uh, but, but it was just that responsible citizens impeached, is that what I mentioned? Thank you.
Trustee Zepania?
At first, I wanna say thank you to the coalition group for that presentation. And just for feedback or for whole future hopes, I do wish that in the future we include more of the specific student groups again, just going off of what trustee Gonzalez Hoi said. And also that... Sorry, I'm drawing a blank. I just hope that in the future, again, I wanna be respectful of the public's opinion. And because this is also based off of a survey that the whole public was given to the W C C U S D that maybe for the next time that we go over an update like this, after let's say year two or just an update in general, that maybe we have a public comment, so we can include their opinions as well, or include that topic at the end. Thank you.
All right, trustee Smith Foe?
Thank you very much. I have two points. Uh, the first point is, uh, thank, well, let me start off. Thank you, Guiding Coalition, for all the work that you did. I know that it wasn't easy to come to a consensus, right? That takes a lot of effort and work just in and of itself, so I do wanna show appreciation for that. Dr. Hurst, this is what I would, I'm asking kinda in a, um, rhetorical fashion. Did these statements that we saw presented to us, did they go in front of ELAC, APAC, MDAC, ASAT, LCAP, SSE, Climate Team, Labor Partners, Leadership Classes, the PTAs, the PTOs? Did we put them on our Facebook page? Did we put them on Instagram? Did we do all of that stuff to elicit comments, right, and feedback and, and suggestions about how it, how this plays out and how they hear it in their ear, right? Because I think that if we would have done some of that, if, if we, if we didn't, but if we would have done some of that, I think that we would have caught very quickly the word citizen, right? I think that we would have caught very quickly how there's a discrepancy between uh, students and then learners, right? Like which, how can we streamline that information? Um, I agree with our student trustee, this is a perfect item to go in front of our leadership classes, right? All of our high schools have one, this is a perfect time to elicit that information from them. This is also a perfect time to, and again, we're at the beginning of the year, right? This is where we're hitting it hot, those new kindergarten parents just came, they have opinions, right? Our high school senior parents, they have big opinions, they've been here thirteen years, they have big, big opinions. And, um, as, as one of your guiding coalition members like to say, big feelings, right? And we need to honor those big feelings and value those big feelings by asking the questions, right? Asking to make sure that this mission, vision, graduate profile fits the district that they are now attending. That's the first thing. The second thing is when we went to, we, you showed a, a slide that had a one, year one and year two, right? And then year three. Here's my pause. On year two, it says that we are going to vet organizations that are we gonna hire, that then come in and do training, give us opinions, uh, give us, uh, kind of roadmaps of where we're going, right? That's what I took from that year two. I wanna caution us around hiring more consultants, right? We, we have, we should have a freeze on that until we can actually get our budget in a manageable a manageable working form, for lack of better words, okay? So when we do talk about this, that that causes me pause because we're still in negotiation with our labor partners, right? So we are still, we're still working with a budget, we're still moving it around. I don't want us to lock ourselves into something that we can't pay for. The other thing is we have a lot of fine people in W C C U S D, homegrown, that can do a lot of this training, this work, this, um, leading us in a direction. We've had strategic plans before in the district, and we have people that have worked on there, so there's a lot of historical knowledge. So tapping into that and seeing who were those presenters, who were those people that guided us during that um, that journey would be, I would think, good for the district to look into. Um, also, when we talk about the counselors, I really don't want us to forget that we gotta get it down to two fifty to one, right, when we're talking about our counselors, and if we wanna talk about mental health, then we have to talk about having those counselors at the elementary school level. Right, we cannot have one without the other. If we don't have elementary school counselors, we can't talk about mental health. And also having health, um, health, health stations at every school, having healthcare stations at every school. And I believe that is my final comment. Dr. Hurst, I did wanna make sure that I put labor partners in that long list that I talked about. APAC, ASAT, ELAC, MDAC, LCAP, SSE, Climate Team, Labor Partners, Leadership Classes, PTAs and PTOs. I would like this, uh, statement to be run in front of all of them. And let's see if we can get those numbers up about participation. Thank you, President Christian, I'm complete.
All right, thank you. Trustee Reckler?
I wanna thank the coalition for their work, and I'm going to email in a few things to Dr. Hurst, who can send them to you. Um, I also want to thank trustee Gonzalez Hoi for his call out on responsible citizens, that was an excellent call. Um, yeah, thank you, thank you very much for that.
All right, trustee Philip?
Thank you. So I'm just gonna, it'll be easier, um, if I do it this way. Um, I'm just gonna share my screen very briefly, um, so you could see what I'm looking at. Um, and then I'm gonna e- email the comments to the superintendent, um, as well. Um, so one second. Uh, vision. Okay. Um. So I looked at what you all did, um, and I think that what you did, uh, was, was good. And, but I do think that there needs to be more alignment between the vision and the mission, uh, because they feed into each other. So you'll see what I, I'll start with the mission, right? Um, I just put the word learners, and that's just a consistency issue. Um, it could be students, right? I added two words. Um, so I actually added, uh, knowledge, right, like this is, this is a school system, right? And so, yes, we are giving kids skills, but we're, we're knowledge, right? This is a, an institution of, of learning. So knowledge, skills, and confidence necessary to choose their own pathways and follow their own passions. This is essentially what you guys wrote, uh, it's just tweaked a little. And then if you look up to the vision, um, it's just consistent with what I'm suggesting the mission might be. I have other thoughts around this, but I was really trying to honor what you all have presented um, and just kind of massage that a little bit. Um, and then at the very bottom, uh, where it says, um, uh, responsible, uh, I changed citizens to members of society. Um, I thought about residents, um, but the reason I put members of society is because I think that is what you were actually going for in the word citizen. Um, but I think members of society is more encompassing. And I also put, I took courage and put it into the profile. Um, and I totally get that the profile is like what we want our students to be, right? And so like with the idea of healthy mind and body, but I think we also want our students to be courageous. Um, and I went back and actually looked while I was sitting here like, okay, what is actually literally the dictionary definition of courageous? Right? And I was like, okay, for me, that belongs in the actual profile and not above. Um, because even in order for you to have a, a moment of courage, right? That, that means that you're in a moment of, of, of dilemma, right? You can't be courageous without the uncomfortableness of the environment that causes you to exercise courage. And so I don't know that we, we necessarily wanna bake that definition into our vision or mission. Um, that our kids are going to be in trouble, cuz that's, you can only have courage or exercise it when you're in trouble. Uh, but we do want them to be courageous, which is why I, I, I think that it should go in the profile. I just wanted to show this to you, and I wanted everybody to see it, because it's much easier for me to do this, this way, than to talk about it in the abstract, right? Because it's like, what is he talking about? And it doesn't match up. But thank you, uh, very much, and also, uh, to the folks who are part of the coalition that left, um, I'm, uh... I, I hope I wasn't, and I hope we weren't downers, um, this is really important work, um, and it needs to get done. Um, it's not something that could stretch out for a year, because it really does affect everything else that we're trying to do, uh, in, in, in moving this district forward. So thank you, um, I'm gonna send this to the superintendent and, and I'm done.
All right, thank you.
I'm gonna stop sharing.
We'll finish with that item. And now we are going to move to E two. Uh, single plan for student achievement.
We turn it over to Ms. Martin.
Um, there we go. Good evening, board. Parents and community members, I am here to present to you again our single plan for student achievement. I've been before you presenting these before, and so today I will be presenting um, the S P S As again, and then also bringing forward three schools that have completed their S P S A for the twenty-one, I mean, twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Next slide, please. What is a school plan for student achievement? It is a document that represents a school cycle of continuous improvement for student achievement. The annual process of developing, reviewing, and updating the S P S A includes a comprehensive review of data and the development of actions necessary to achieve. School goals. In essence, the SPSA is a school's blueprint to improve the academic performance of all students. Next slide, please. Why do we need an SPSA? It is for regulatory compliance. Schools must develop a school plan, SPSA. When the school operates a Title One program, Education Code Section sixty-four zero zero one. Or the district determines that schools must complete an SPSA. Or the school has been identified for a comprehensive support and improvement, also known as CSI. A best practice is that you go through a cycle of continuous improvement. You analyze data, identify strengths, areas of growth, plan and implement action services, and then further analyze data and so on. Next slide, please. The twenty-two, twenty-three SPSA and West Contra Costa vision and goals. Um, for twenty-two, twenty-three were designed, were guided by the newly developed instructional focus plan. The three-year local control accountability plan, LCAP, which describes metrics and action services to meet district goals. The SPSA connects school goals, metrics and action services expenditures to the LCAP. Grade level, department level group, design specific plans for implementations of actions and services in the SPSA. Next slide, please. The goals of the instructional focus plan, LCAP and SPSA align to our. Current and being revised, as you just heard, we're going through our strategic planning process, so. Achieving students, driving employees and caring schools are what principals are still currently using to drive their SPSA. Um, and for those goals, you can see under each of those areas, um what's covered in each of those areas. Next slide, please. Best practices for a sequence of SPSA work is to review data to determine work, work, what worked well for students and what didn't work. From past year, identify needs for the upcoming year. Identify metrics to measure success, develop goals to address needs. Design action steps to meet the goals during upcoming year and fund the actions and services to meet the goals. Next slide, please. The SPSA is designed with the introduction pages. I won't read all of this, but we have the purpose and description. We have schoolwide components. Next slide, please. The SPSA overview outlines actions and services designed to meet goals. Which in, which includes the timeline, student groups, person responsible and the funding. Next slide, please. As part of creating the SS, um, the single plan for student achievement, you have to have an SSC that's formed. The role of the SSC is to collaborate on the content and development of the SPSA. The SPSA shall be reviewed annually and updated, including proposed expenditure of funds allocated to the school through the CONAP. And local control accountability plan, the LCAP, if any, by the SSC. The SSC, SPSA shall be reviewed and approved by the governing board at a regularly scheduled meeting whenever there are material changes. Next slide, please. The role of the ELAC Advisory Council, each California public school grades kindergarten through twelve with twenty-one or more English learners. Much form, must form an English learner advisory committee, ELAC. Their responsibilities include advising the principal and staff in the development of the site plan for English learners. And submitting the plan to the school site council for consideration and inclusion in the school plan for student achievement. Assisting in the development of the schoolwide needs assessment. Identify ways to make parents aware of the importance of regular school attendance. Each ELAC shall have the opportunity to elect at least one member to the multilingual. District English Learner Advisory Committee, also known as MDEC. Next slide, please. We also have the role of African American Parent Advisory Council, which is our APAC. Their role and responsibility is to meet with the site administrator, review the African American student frame in the SPSA. Advise the principal in the development of a site plan and support African American black students and submission of that plan to the school site. Council for consideration and inclusion in the school plan for student achievement. Review data and trends pertaining to the achievement of African American students. Ensure there are resources dedicated to African American students and review the data. Support with planning a family night for the APAC and family friendly walkthrough at the school site. Assisting in the development of the schoolwide needs assessment, elect the delegate to the district's African American site advisory team. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation and the schools that are coming before you for their SPSA tonight. Are listed on the um agenda, which are Dover, Fairmont and Madeira. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now we go to questions. Trustee Smith Paul.
President Christian, I don't have any questions. I'm sorry, my hand was up from the last time.
All right. Jesse Sopania.
Thank you for the presentation. I'm especially glad that APAC and ELAC councils are being implemented in the district. But also, when it comes to certain schools that have Asian American representation, that's more of the greater demographic. Especially in smaller schools and little colleges as well. Is there ever gonna be an implementation of AAPI, LGBTQ councils as well? And also, earlier, there was a passionate amount of African American parents during the public comment. And for that parent and African American council. I'm glad there is, but is there a way that we could reach out to more parents of Asian, Hispanic? Um, Asian or Hispanic demographics or even white and in total. Maybe kind of create more councils that could also benefit those races as well?
Our ELAC um actually consists of our English learner parents. Um, so that includes, you know, Latin parents, Latinx parents, Latino parents. That is, that makes up that group um for our ELAC. Our African American PAC group is our African American parent group and then we have, uh, we we only have ELAC. And the SSC is essentially the official body that makes up um the approval. Or the body for approving SPSAs and that's where you run your budget, your SPSAs, compliance. Um, you report data through the SPS, um through the SSC. See, so the SSC can actually be made up of any parent group, so it's not exclusive to any particular ethnicity. So the SSC could be made up of LGBTQ, um, English learner parents, African American parents. There can be any parents on the SSC. In terms of um other PACs. We just recently hired a coordinator in climate who will be working more on outreach. Um, to our LGBTQ families and other families to really get more families involved. And so we just recently hired someone to do some facilitation in that area.
Thank you, and I also have one more question. When it comes to the data of besides the schools of Dover, Fairmont and Madeira. Having SBA implemented, is there a way to get data for the how? The schools already have SBSAs or ways that more parents can get involved besides just the SSC?
Did you ask, are there other ways? I couldn't really hear you. Are you saying, are there other ways that parents can get involved beyond the SSC?
Sorry, um. Is there a way that I could get the data for the schools that already have SBSAs for future ones besides Fairmont? And Madeira and Dover to see which ones are gonna be next that will have an FBA?
So all SPSAs that have already been approved should be posted on the website with all of their information. So you should be able to go and get any SPSA and the information from the SPSA on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, right, trustee Recker.
I have one question and two comments. The question is on Fairmont and they are looking for ELD curriculum, but we've bought that. And I'm sure it's a timing issue about when they wrote their SPSA and when it was approved. So I'm just hoping that schools have that curriculum and there's been. A download to principals that it's coming.
Yes, the ELD curriculum, there was actually summer training and the materials were actually de- delivered to school sites.
Okay, thank you. And then I just have, I have two comments at the end.
All right, um. Any other question? All right, if not, we go to com- comments.
For comments, once again, I just wanna put some eyeballs on Madeira. Uh, one of their resource inequities was not having enough funding for. Uh, socioeconomically disadvantaged students and not being able to serve those students. And so, uh, just to call out that at Madeira, which you would think is an affluent school. They have eighty-eight kids that are socio- socioeconomically disadvantaged and they received. Sixteen thousand three hundred dollars um for them and that's clearly not enough to serve those students' needs. And so I'm just publicly calling it out. The other thing that I wanted to mention, this goes back a couple of SPSAs, but since I was at Greenwood today, it just reminded me that I didn't say it when that. Um, SPA came forward and that is, is that um. Large majority of their students and their students' families are native Spanish speakers. And they do not have staff in the right positions to communicate and to adequately serve the student population. That um is attending, so long term, there's gonna have to be a shifting of how do we build that capacity? And have uh that language ability, that intimate language ability in place to serve students. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Uh, trustee Phillip.
So, thank you very much for this uh presentation on this evening as well. Um, I like the idea of uh making sure that there's an an APAC. Parent, but also an Eli parent on the SSCs. Um, and my request, uh, and I I'm, I have to give credit, uh, this did come from a parent. Uh, that I met with, um, that we should actually have a board policy. Uh, that actually sets aside a seat on all of our SSCs uh for those two parent groups. Um, and the reason being, uh, is that particularly depending on the school. It may be difficult um for those parents to get enough votes. Uh, to actually sit uh at the decision-making table in their school. Um, and that's a complaint that I've heard from parents, um, and it's one that we can easily rectify as a board. Uh, by just uh making the policy in our district. Uh, that there is a dedicated seat uh at the table for a a member. Uh, how should I put it? A representative of one of these parent group, of both of these parent groups. And so, for example, there are different ways that it could be done. Uh, you know, I'm gonna use the APACs as an example, but it could work the same way with the ELACs. Is that the APACs may um may vote to see who goes or whoever is the chair. Um, of 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 the APAC at the school, that might be, it might be set aside for that person in specific. So there's different ways that this can be done, um, but I would just hope that we can. Uh, get it done because I think there's one thing, uh, when it comes to 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 giving time. For people to speak and there's a whole nother thing when it comes to them actually being able to speak for themselves and and to vote on what's actually happening at their school. And another thing, because I know if we are gonna do this policy and I hope that we will, and I hope that there's consensus on the board to empower parents this way. The other thing that I've heard and it's a complaint that I've heard from parents and over a period of time. Is they don't even necessarily know when the SSC meetings are at their schools. So not only do they not have a dedicated seat, the meetings are happening without their, without their knowledge. It doesn't mean that a principal is necessarily not announcing it. Um, I I I'm gonna just assume that they are. Um, but perhaps they're not announcing it in a way that um is actually reaching all of their parents. So so those are my comments. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, any other comments? Oh, trustee Ms. Smith Paul.
Thank you so much for bringing the SPSAs forward. I'm going to abstain like I've done before, just because I want to ensure that there is a concerted effort to make sure that. Our ELACs and our APACs are represented. I also, Dr. Hurst, don't want us to gloss over what our student trustee said, right? We need to have a conversation. A both end, right? We need to make sure that we have a both end. There is, there are historically marginalized groups in our district. That have been underperforming, that have the intentionality behind why we form these PACs, right? But that doesn't exclude the other set of students, parents, community that we have at a, a large level in our district. That also want to ensure that their voices are heard. So we have to be able to do a both end. It's equity is not taking from one and giving to another. Equity is making sure everyone has what they need, right? To make sure that every single person has what they need and that's what we need to be striving for. And we do that through having these really transparent conversations and listening to everyone's. Everyone's opinion and we have these students who are telling us, wait a minute, what about our LGBTQI plus community? Wait a minute, what about our A, AAPI community, right? Wait a minute, what about, what about our special ed community? Wait a minute, what about our? So we have to be able to hear that. At the same time, we have to understand why there's intentionality behind. You gotta have an APAC, you gotta have an ELAC, have to make sure that if we're raising that tide, all boats float, right? But we have to raise that tide for our most marginalized students. So I think that these are conversations that we need to have. Again, colleagues, I will be abstaining from this vote. Because I want to ensure that we are having that consistency of, hey, you don't have an APAC, you have to. Talk to the district and let's make sure we have some strategies in place to help you push that along. I'm complete, President Christian.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, President Christian. I move that we approve the SPSAs for Dover, Fairmont and Madeira.
Reckler will second.
All right, it's been moved and it's been second. And now we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Sopania.
Sopania, yes.
All right, trustee Miles.
Trustee Miles abstained.
All right, trustee Recker.
Reckler, yeah.
All right, trustee Smith Paul.
Smith Paul's abstains.
All right, uh, trustee Philip.
Yeah.
All right, and Clark Giselle Soy.
Giselle Soy, yes.
All right, and I'm a yes. All right, and he passes. And now we go to E three. Provisional internship.
Good evening, board. Human Resources coming, asking for that the provisional internship permit, better known as PIP. Um, be allowed to, uh, as a district for us to hire individuals who have not yet met their subject matter competence at this time.
Question, trustee Philip.
If there are no questions, may I move item?
You say, are there any other?
I said, if there are no questions, may I move the item?
Oh, yeah.
Reckler will second.
I move that we approve provisional internship permit, i.e. PIPs.
Reckler second.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been second. And um, any comments? All right, go to the vote. Trustee Sopania.
Sopania, yes.
Trustee Miles.
Miles, yay.
All right, uh, trustee Redbird. All right, trustee uh, Smith Paul.
Smith Paul's, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
All right. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Gonzalez, so yes.
All right, and I'm a yes. It passes. All right, now we move to. E four certification board authorization.
Again, HR is recommending that we approve the variable term waivers. And these are people that have not met their credential um requirements, but give them enough time to fulfill those required. Get it, fulfill those requirements. Thank you.
All right. Trustee Philip.
If there are no questions, may I move the item?
Are there any questions? All right.
I move that we approve uh item E four certificated board authorization. Education code four, four, two, five, eight point three.
Reckler second.
All right, it's been second. And. Any comments? All right, we go to the vote. Um. Trustee Sapania.
Sapania, yes.
Trustee Miles.
Miles, yay.
All right, trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Uh trustee Smith-.
Smith falls, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips.
Yeah.
All right, uh. Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Gonzalez, so yes.
Did I? Get trustee Reckler? Hey, okay.
Reckler, yes again.
Okay, and I, and I'm a yes. I just wanted to make sure I, I didn't overbook anybody. Okay. It passes and now, um. We go to uh E five, Pinot Valley High School Field.
Good evening, Board. Thank you for having us tonight. Uh, staff is seeking the approval of change order twenty-three for the Pinot Valley High School Field House and Fleacher Project. Uh, during the demolition phase, it was discovered that we had a mix of rocks, rock and soil versus. The um, the reusable AB that we thought were, was going to be under the paving section. As such, there was additional off-haul costs as well as um inefficiencies in loading. This occurred across the um entire basketball. Tennis, uh softball and baseball areas, so it was a, a massive amount of um. Material that had to be offloaded from the site. Um, we are bringing this forward tonight um as an action item because it is over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
All right, uh, so Clark Gonzalez-Hoy.
Thank you, President Christian. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I did have a couple of questions about the budget for Pinot Valley. Um, how are we doing? We've had a lot of change orders, unfortunately. Um, how are we doing when it comes to the budget for Pinot Valley High School at this point?
This particular change order is still within the um approved budget uh for the overall projects. So we are not asking for a budget adjustment tonight. We are getting closer and closer to that line uh and trying to mitigate uh any other uh change orders. Unfortunately, the unforeseen conditions on this particular project have been um significant.
Thank you. How close are we to that line?
I would have to get back to you with an exact number.
Thank you. I, I would love to just see that information.
Right. We just closed the books, so they just reopened units this week.
Cut it. Thank you. That's it, President Christian.
All right, thank you. Um, any other questions? Trustee Phillips.
So when we're creating the budgets for these projects. Um, I understand that the budgets have to have some cushion. Uh, because things like this happen. Um. But is there, how do I say this? At what point does cushion become excessive? Does it become not just cushion, but down pillows and all of those kind of things? What, can you understand what I'm trying to ask you?
I understand your question. Part of the challenge of construction is it happens over a very long tier period of time. This particular budget was established. I'm, I don't have the exact date, but I'm gonna say decade ago, right? Um, and so it's an extremely long timeline. And when we're doing it, um. There is. We, we don't even have a design yet, right? And so as we move forward throughout the process, we're continually um. Doing cost estimating throughout the design process. Then when we get to bidding. We also don't control how much money the bid is going to come in as. Um, obviously, we hope it's close to the estimated budget that we were given by the design professionals, but. That may or may not be true depending on the timing, the environment, the escalation, et cetera, right? And so. We don't necessarily have a lot of control of what that cushion looks like compared to when the original budget was passed. Um, this Pinot project um overall was a, a large project. Um, and so the particular fields project was just kind of tucked underneath that overall um bucket of money, right? Um, and so I know I'm not necessarily giving you a direct answer. But the other thing that comes out of this budget that are besides the direct construction costs are. All of the consult, consultant fees, including um the architect, which is a major chunk. Um, as well as permit costs, that's cost for furniture and equipment, it's cost for. Um, DSA and any sort of permitting we have. So there's a variety of things that come through this. There is, um, and it's present here that I will need to come before you if we go over ten percent of change orders. And so there is some level of industry standard that once you get over ten percent. There was something that was seriously wrong um with the project. We never shoot for ten percent as being our line. Um, we, we do. We are aware that that is a, a place, um, when you're in that five percent, five to ten percent line. We would normally consider that a pretty typical project, um, not that that's what we shoot for, but that's just kind of. Around town, you could ask um most design professionals and they would say you would be in that on the change. Change order front before you get really concerned about it being. Inappropriate or excessive. So that.
That's helpful. Thank you very much. And it is good to see.
All right, trustee Smith-.
Dr. Hertz, that's Ms. Hooper speaking, correct? I can't see her on the screen, but I, I recognize the voice. Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Hooper or Dr. Hertz, here's my question. What happens when we hit that line? What does Pinot look like then, right? Because there's gonna hit, we're gonna hit that line. And we're waiting for Ms. Hooper and Mr. Freeze to tell us where, how close we are to that line. But once we hit that line, is it, whoops, we're done. Sorry, we couldn't lay the gravel, or now we gotta come back and we gotta pull out of another pocket or another bucket. Like, what's the next step? Because we're close to the line. We don't know how close, but we're close to the line. So, Ms. Hooper, what's the next step? What happens when we hit the line?
Well, for any change or by board policy, any change order that is over ten percent. As any change order that's over two hundred and fifty thousand, uh, we have to come before the board um as an action item. So that's one line. The other line is really that uh budget amount. So we also have another constraint on us, which we are not authorized to spend. Any more money on a particular project than is in the authorized budget. So if we also hit the line of the authorized budget, which I believe is what Mr. Goncal-. Sorry, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy was asking, um. We, we also have to come back to the board and say, we are out of funds for this project. May we access more money for it, or do we need to stop the project? And that's, that's really all that's left past that point. We are really trying not to hit that point. Um.
Okay, so thank you for that, because that gives me a little bit of understanding. So we have a bucket of money for Pinot, to finish up Pinot. If you run out of that money in Pinot, either if you hit the ten percent threshold where it's more money than you thought, or the change order. Or if you just run out of money, the next step is that you have to come back to the board and say, listen. We're out of money, either we pull from somewhere else, or we stop and it is what it is. That's what you're saying in, in a summary, a summarized version, correct?
It mostly, so um, like tonight, we are coming back because of the size of the change order. But not because we've gone beyond the authorized budget.
Right, so you're pulling, you're pulling money from the budget that you already have to fix the rock gravel issue there. Okay, so Dr. Hertz, this is my, um, and we're still in questions, so. What would it look like? When we are at a. Out of money. So my question is, if you could bring something like that back to the board, like this is it when it's complete. Well, we have enough money, this is it when they've got a hole in the tennis court because we ran out of money, right? So I would like to see a, uh, uh, have a conversation with the board saying, this is how close we are. This is what it's gonna look like if we run out. This is where the money's gonna come from. If y'all say we can still do it. Like, we need to have that conversation before we get up against that deadline. Thank you, I'm complete.
All right, thank you.
I was gonna make a motion, trustee Phillips, do you still have questions?
No, sir, I don't have a question, I have a comment.
Okay, um, I make a motion that we approve the change order. And I also have a comment.
I second that motion because it's coming out of their own little bucket.
You know what? Can, can I ask one question? Before we go on?
Go ahead.
With the money that is left in the current budget. And I know the school's built, but. There's still work that's being done. Do you guys have a list of what's most important? So like, you guys have this whole plan, right? You've been doing this and doing this and doing this. But as you get down to, because you're about to run out of money. Um, do you have a list of what's most important? Like, with this money that we have left. We want to make sure that A and B are done. We would really like C and D, but. We gotta make sure A and B is done. Have you guys done that?
So just to be clear, this is the last um construction project that's supposed to occur at Pinot. And the money for the scope of work that was bid out, which is the full construction project. Is already allotted in there. Ready to go, right? And so we will complete the work that's in this particular contract phase, right? For the base work. Um, we do not have another construction phase post this completion. Of, of the fields. The fields was the final phase. Now, we do have FFNE items, which is furnitures, fixtures and equipment, right? And so there are some things that we still would like to purchase, like the trash cans. And we have some um AV equipment and those small contracts that would wrap up. Um, the end of this phase. Um, so we do have a, a list of that. It has been preliminarily budgeted. It is not technically in priority order at the moment, um, but that has been established to confirm. What outstanding. Um. Liabilities or, or um potential things we still need.
Thank you. That was the question. Thank you.
Thank you, President Christian. I just have a comment. May, may I move to comment or?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do the comments and then we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Uh. You want to start the comment?
Sure. Thank you, President Christian. Thank you so much for being here and for the presentation. I know that your boss is not here, so I usually would be addressing him, but. Um, you know, I think as we move closer and closer to that line, I know we're almost done. Hopefully, we won't get to that line. But if we get to that line, um, I, I agree with what trustee Phyllis was getting to, which is like. There's gonna have to be some decisions, right? Do we want this type of fence, or do we not want this type of fence because there's a change order that might come? I do think that we have, I'm, I'm sure you're already thinking of those things. But if we look in the future and we have more change orders when we get there. I did just want to make it clear that I think that if you bring us options, um, I'm not touching measure R. Right, to include any change orders of Pinot Valley, right? So I do, I do want to make that clear. For me, I'm one of five, one of seven, right? But one of seven, that, that would vote no on any change orders that would tap into measure R, right? Because I think that I've been very clear that money is for Kennedy and Richmond High. Um, and Siege, uh, hopefully, and I'm jumping to the future conversation we're gonna have, but. Um, I do worry, the closer we get, right? We only have two pots of money, right? More bond and general fund, right? Um, really, that we can tap unless there's some fees or whatever we can find. And, and you can work your magic, Ms. Super, but um, I do worry, right? Because I even joked in agenda setting that we need a placeholder for change orders for Pinot Valley High School at every. Uh, every agenda, right? So, so I'm just getting, growing concerned that we're getting closer to that, but hopefully we won't. And this whole conversation was pointless, but I do, we just want to make clear. If that does happen, I hope that the options don't include measure R for us to consider. Thank you.
Uh, trustee Phillips.
I strongly suggest that even though this is the last. Construction project, which is what I'm hearing, I strongly suggest that you all look at the funds that are left under the budget. And that you prioritize. Um, because I, for me, and I'm one person, like trustee Gonzalez-Hoy said. Um, I, I can't see myself voting to go over budget, and I'm not just talking about measure R, just over budget period. Because of the amount of money that's been spent and what hasn't been done in other places. So I would love and I hope that this is all completed. Uh, but in case it is not, or it cannot be, again, I really strongly suggest. That you prioritize because. I'm not sure that their votes are up here to give more money over the budget. That's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, trustee Smith-.
Um, Dr. Hertz, when we're prioritizing out of that money that's left over. This needs to be a community conversation. This is not something that the district decides that, okay, we want trash cans over light fixtures. This needs to be a community conversation with the, the school community in Pinot, not just the high schoolers. But the entire school community, elementary schools, we hope, and middle schools, we hope, articulate up to going to Pinot. Valley High School. So we want to make sure, because we have that vertical alignment, that this conversation is a conversation that's inclusive. Of the school community. They need to be able to own the fact that they are not getting. But they will have, do you, you kind of see what I'm saying when we're filling in the blanks here? So I would like to make sure that we are advocating and making sure that we are listening to the community. Collins, Ella Hurst, Stewart, Shannon, Pinot Middle, Pinot Valley High, we're listing, man, that we're listening to all of the stools that will. Vertically align up to Pinot Valley High School. That's all that I want to say. I just want to make sure that that's very, um, and I'm one board member, but I really want to make sure that. That's a part of our, part of how we handle these conversations, Dr. Hertz, is that we listen to the community. And what their needs are when we build these facilities and continue to use money with these facilities. I'm complete, President Christian.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm just gonna close out with my comment on it. You know, my answer is no. Straight up, because it's too, I don't see too many change orders, change order, change order, change order. Every time you come back, change order, change order. Well, you, you better treat every other school right, like Kenny, Richmond High and other schools. So e- equity need to be across the board with everybody. You know, I know Kennedy getting their field done, but is Kennedy field gonna look like? The other school? I like to see, you know, I haven't seen the plans of it, but. All this money being spent, we ain't, we not gonna touch that money, that is, is gonna help the other schools. So, uh. Just, you gotta do it right. All right, so where do we go? To the vote, all right. We go to the vote. Was it moved to the second? All right. All right, and now we go to the vote. Trustee Sopaya?
Sopaya abstained.
Uh, trustee Miles?
Miles abstained.
All right. Uh, trustee Recker?
Recker, yes.
All right. Uh, trustee Smith Bowe?
Uh, Smith Bowe's votes, yes, because it's coming out of your own bucket, but your bucket getting smaller, so yes to this.
Okay. Uh, trustee Phillips? All right. Uh, Clark Gonzalez, who?
Gonzalez, yes.
Like trustee Smith Bowe says, it's getting smaller, so gotta work what we got. Yeah. C four. C three? Okay, we, we're gonna go back to the items that were pulled earlier in the beginning of the agenda. Uh, we're gonna go to C three? Trustee Smith Bowe?
Thank you, President Christian, I pulled C three because, uh, Dr. Hurst, it was, and I'm trying to find if I can pull it up, we had contracts totaling nine hundred thousand plus. Is that accurate that I saw, nine hundred and twelve, I believe?
Hold on, we're pulling that up.
The total contracts presented in the contracting item, uh, total nine hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars across the general fund and the building fund.
Thank you, and then, Dr. McIntyre, the extended learning opportunity, that totaled how much?
Five hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and two dollars.
And is that all new money or existing money that we had? Is that new money coming down from the extended learning opportunity grant, or is that money that we already had? Have, are these new contracts? Have these contracts been vetted through the matrix that Dr. Hurst was talking to us about? Can you give me an explanation about that, please?
So that's within the, the grant amount that we're being awarded this year. Uh, I would expect more changes, uh, a- as plans are rolled out to meet all the compliance requirements for an expanded program in advance of July first of twenty twenty-three. Uh, we received quite a bit more money this year, and this is gonna be rolled out in pieces to make sure we meet all those compliance requirements and student needs.
And then, thank you for that, and then, Dr. Hurst, there was one contract, the illuminate, illuminate ed contract, that was on here too. That contract works directly with the strategic plan, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And that contract is how much, Dr. McIntyre?
Fifty thousand dollars total.
Total fifty thousand dollars, and does that take us to, remember when we looked at the plan, we had a circle with number one, a circle with number two, a circle with number three? Is that covering number two, step, year two?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you for that, and again, my, um, issue with that circle number two is that where that we're vetting organizations, and that means that we're hiring contractors, so that's why this would be getting a no from me tonight, is because I want that to be a, wait a minute, let's put a freeze on this and make sure that we are looking at all angles, including in-house, what people can do in-house for us. Um, President Christian, I'm complete with why I pulled the item, thank you.
All right. Are there any? Okay.
Doctor Hurst? This particular contract is, 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 well, at least part A has to do with, part A and B have to do with coaching the interim associate superintendent of HR.
What was that, Dr. Hurst?
Yeah, that's correct, so Dr. McIntyre was saying, part of that is for what we have discussed for the associate superintendent of HR.
So part of that, part of that money that we're talking about with the Luminate Ed is about the coaching for HR, and then the other part is for section two of strategic planning?
That was Le- LeFay Platter that I spoke to the board about.
That first part?
Yes.
Okay, part of it, okay. I really wish that that would have been separate, I know it's hard to separate that out, but because there's two different functions, right? One is going to coaching, right, with HR, which we've agreed upon, and then the other is going to that strategic plan phase two. So, that's, that was just my personal pain, I would like it to be separate, because it's two separate things, one we've talked about, one we were talking about tonight, right? We talked about, we've talked about the strategic plan before and what's gonna be necessary, but circumstances have changed, right, in the district, circumstances have changed, uh, budgetarily, and I think we need to take a pause on that. But thank you, Dr. McIntyre and Dr. Hurst, for that explanation, I appreciate it.
All right, and just to clarify, for the strategic planning, I heard you mention the vetting process for equity. So that's just a small component, so I just wanted to point that out. Uh, just recognizing, I did hear you say that we have internal people as well, but that's just a small portion of what they would be doing.
Thank you, so the people that we're, the people that we're trying to approve tonight under that contract, a small portion of those people would be doing part of the vetting process of bringing people in, correct? Is that what I heard?
Yep, that's a very small part, yes.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hurst.
You're welcome.
All right.
President Christian, I move that we approve item C three.
Second.
All right, it's been moved, and it's been second. And now we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Sopaya?
Sopaya, yes.
All right, uh, trustee Miles?
Miles, yay.
All right, trustee, uh, Smith, uh, trustee Recker?
Recker, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Bowe?
Smith Bowe's now.
All right, uh, trustee Phillips?
Yay.
All right.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All right. And, I, I, yes. And it passes. Now we go to C four.
So C four is me, I have no comments or questions, I just wanted to roll a call vote on the item.
President Christian, I move that we approve C four.
Smith Bowe seconds.
All right, and now to the vote. Uh, trustee Sopaya?
Sopaya, yes.
All right, trustee, uh, Miles?
Miles, yay.
All right, trustee, uh, trustee Recker?
Recker, no.
All right, trustee Smith Bowe?
Smith Bowe's, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips?
Nay.
All right, Clark Gonzalez, who?
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All right, and I'm yes on that. It passes. C seven. Smith Bowe?
Thank you, uh, President Christian, I've had a question, Dr. Hurst, on the CU, P, C, A, A, A projects. These projects, it looks like a lot of them were done before September. Are we voting just to approve what was already done? Like, the money has already been spent, correct? Are these outstanding orders that we still owe money to these people? Tell me exactly what I'm looking at here.
Yes, the cupca list is a, um, part of our negotiation with, uh, how we institute small projects, and it, we are part of the cupca organization. Overall, um, Melissa would have additional information on what that's exactly involved, but it, it allows us to do certain level of contracting, uh, without going out to formal bids. So things that are under sixty thousand dollars allow us to go out, um, and, uh, complete the projects uh, without doing a formal bid process, as long as we are going through the cupca process. Um, and so it's a procurement style, but part of the regulations that go around that procurement is that we have to publish, um, the list of contracts that we award through that, um, mechanism. And so you're not actually approving the money or the, the contracts themselves. Um, this is just a notification system of what we have done, um, in that particular compute, uh, procurement mode.
Thank you so much for that explanation, I really appreciate it, one of these was fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty, that's cutting it close. But I really appreciate you giving an explanation for that. President Christian, I don't have any other, uh, comments, I'm ready to move this item, and I would make a motion.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved, been second. And now we go to the vote. Uh, trustee Sopaya?
Sopaya, yes.
All right, uh, trustee Miles?
Miles, yay.
All right, uh, trustee Recker?
Recker, yes.
All right, trustee Smith Bowe?
Smith Bowe's, yes.
All right, uh, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
All right, Clark Gonzalez, who?
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All right, and I'm, yes. And it passes. Uh, C nine.
Yes, that is me. Approval of membership of District Facility Seven-Eleven Committee, I just had a question on this, I'm sorry, I tried to get this answered before the meeting, but I was not able to, so are you reducing the number of members in the committee?
So when we originally, uh, the, the, the original committee that was approved by the board included eleven members. Three members have since dropped off the board, and so what we're doing is shrinking the size of the committee to match the size of, of, of the actual committee. That way, we don't have an easier time reaching quorum. Because as an eleven-member board, we need at least six members present to reach quorum, with an eight-member board, we will have quorum at five. And so, it's, you know, getting everybody to show up to every meeting is a challenge, and while we'd always like to expand our committees to be eleven, uh, this particular committee is planned to have four, uh, public engagements before they make the recommendations to the board, and we'd like to keep this moving forward and actually have a quorum in our, our remaining meetings.
And for what you've tried to hold so far, have you, have you been able to get five people to show up?
Y- yes, actually, the first meeting, we had six, uh, and then we had one drop off. So then technically, partway through the meeting, we, we lost quorum. Uh, and, and so that's, that's why we're bringing this back, to try to avoid that in the future.
Okay, thank you, I have nothing further. So then.
Okay.
Dr. McIntyre, I have a question, President Christian, may I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Dr. McIntyre, we've had two Seven-Eleven Committee meetings, correct? So the first one, we had cor- let me, let me separate those questions, we've had two meetings, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, the first one, we had quorum. And then the second one, we did not have quorum, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't missed meetings that I've missed, because I've attended those two, okay, so we had those two, okay. Thank you, no further questions, thank you, President Christian, I'm complete.
All right. And now we go to the vote, uh, did we, uh, move it?
I'll move it, I'll move C nine, approval of membership of District Facility Seven-Eleven Committee.
I'll second that, Smith Bowe's seconds.
Okay, it's been moved, it's been second. Uh, now to the vote, uh, trustee Sopaya?
Sopaya, yes.
All right, uh, trustee Miles?
Miles, yay.
All right, trustee Recker?
Recker, yeah.
All right. Trustee Smith Bowe?
Smith Bowe's, yes.
All right, trustee Phillips?
Yeah.
All right, uh, Clark Gonzalez, who?
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
All right, and I'm yes on that.
President Christian?
Yeah.
Before we move on, may I make a quick comment about the Seven-Eleven Committee?
Yeah.
Dr. Hurst, because we're shrinking that number to be able to hit quorum, we have to make sure that we have that community engagement, I'm complete.
Okay. So, we, we covered all the items. Okay, and now we'll do comments from the board, and we'll close out? Two minutes each. Oh, trustee Recker?
I'm sorry, is this for comment?
Yep.
It's really late, I want people to go home and get sleep, I just wanna thank everybody for reacting to the heat, um, doing everything they can to keep classrooms and sites cool, and everybody who's working in the heat. Um, yeah, it's been, it's been awful, and, uh, let's go home and get some sleep, thank you.
Trustee, uh, Smith Bowe?
President Christian, I don't wanna jump in front of the student trustees, are they first?
They don't have comments.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I was just waiting for the timer to start, trustee Christian, President Christian.
You say what now?
I was just waiting for the timer to start, I can start my comments now. Thank you, everyone, for the beginning of school, I appreciate all the hard work from our teachers and our staff and our parents. We are in a incredibly hot part of the year, we need to make sure that we're taking care of ourselves and that we're putting a demand on to be, the district to be taking care, for them to take care of us. Um, we would, need to make sure that we understand that we get what we pay for, and we need to insist on that we are, we are acquiring those things that we've already paid for, we pay for an equity audit, it's unpacked everything that we need to do in the district, I don't think that we need to go backwards, I think we need to go forward, and it's very much like cleaning your house, once you put everything in the middle, it's now time to keep what you need and discard what you don't. We need to make sure that we are paying for, since we are paying for lobbyists, that that lobbyist is speaking on our behalf, because this heat wave is uncovering that this is a state and federal problem too. We need to make sure that we're having the resources to make sure that all of our facilities are at in a, a, uh, degree that can serve all of the students and the teachers. We also need to be clear about our assumptions, not all AAPI individuals are ELA individuals, not all Latinx individuals are English language learner individuals, so we need to make sure that we're covering everybody and clear about our assumptions. We also need to make sure that we're focusing on the most marginalized students in our district intentionally. Those include our African-American students and our Latinx students, they have been historically denied the education that we all want them to have. Parental confidence is a must, we need to make sure that we bring back things like parent university, or look into bringing back things like parent university. We need to make sure that our parents have the confidence that they can advocate for their students and for their children. My timer stopped, President Christian, at twenty-four seconds, y'all may be frozen. Uh-oh. If you are still with me on Zoom, and I am not the one frozen, please shoot me a text and let me know. All right, they're frozen. Thank you so much for letting me know, let me see, uh, I'm gonna put myself on mute, the superintendent's calling me right now, just one second. Okay, everyone, they lost the internet connection, um, they will let us know when they come back, please hang on, thank you for those that are here. They lost internet connection, they're trying to come back on. Thank you for all of you who are texting me to let me know that we are still here, they just lost the connection, I appreciate that. Thank you for all of you who are texting me to let me know that we are still here. They just lost the connection. I appreciate that. I'm still here, just so you know. I'm waiting for them. Thank you for those of you who are sticking with us. We hopefully will be back up in a minute and be able to hear comments from the rest of the board. I'm gonna keep moving around so you know that I'm not frozen. We are waiting for them to come back. They are going to text me hopefully when they're back. Thank you, everyone, for sticking with us. Okay, I think that they're coming back now. It looks like Ms. Rosa is coming back on, so let's see if we can get everyone back. We have Ms. Maria. Let's see if we have everyone else. All right, we see we have Ms. Rosa. I'm still waiting. Thank you again for your patience. I'm gonna mute myself for one second. It looks like Ms. Genesis is logging back in. And I think we're back. Let's see if they can hear us. Not sure they can hear us yet.
Trustee Smith Falls, we are, we're just connecting back.
Thank you, Clark Gonzalez-Hoy. I appreciate it. And trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, oh, there's President Christian. President Christian, my comments are complete.
We can't hear you yet, trustee Smith Fall, so we're waiting for the sound to come back. I mean, I can hear you from my computer, but we're waiting for the sound.
Thank you.
So I'm unmuting for everyone. Can you hear me, trustee Smith Falls?
I can hear you, Dr. Hurst, and my comments are complete. If President Christian wants to move to the next person, we stopped with twenty-four seconds, but I think I was finished.
Okay. Trustee Smith Falls says that she is complete with her comments. She stopped at twenty-four seconds, but she's done. So I'm gonna keep my mic unmute. Unmuted. Anything else, Mr. President? Trustee Phillips, do you have a comment, sir? Can you unmute, sir?
My freaking over the microphone.
On your computer?
Okay, can you all hear me now? Do I sound like a robot? It's back to working. I got. We turned this on.
Okay, thank you very much. So what I want to say is I'm glad that the school year has started off on a good foot. The heat is very difficult to deal with. But that is an act of God, if there ever was one. Nobody who works for the district can turn the sun off. Right? And I think sometimes we just kind of have to also keep perspective about what people realistically can and cannot do. And I have my, my kids, my two boys are in the same heat as everyone else. So I'm not trying to be callous or whatnot, but I am trying to help us keep perspective. What I, what I also want to say, though, about the strategic planning process and the vision and the mission and the graduate profile, just really seriously, thank you. To Dr. Hurst, thank you to the God in Coalition. Thank you to everybody who has been working on this. Dr. Hurst, this is why you are here. This is lit- this, what you were doing tonight, this is literally why you are here. All of the other things that you have to do because you have a multifaceted job. Those things have to be addressed, and those things are important. But you're not here for that. Right? You're, you're not literally here to make sure that, I mean, it's part of your job. But, 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 but you're not here. We could have hired anybody to distribute fans on a hot day. That's not why you're here. You're here to help us build the structure that we need to move our kids forward. That's why you're here. And so to the extent that you can focus on that. And that doesn't mean that you don't have to do other things. That doesn't mean that other things won't pop up. But I think what happens sometimes in this space is everything is an emergency. Everything has to be done immediately, and then the real work never gets done. And so thank you. We didn't finish it, but this is a work in progress, and we're gonna get there. But keep pushing, keep working with the Coalition so we could actually move our children forward. Thank you so much.
Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy?
Thank you, President Christian. Five comments. The first one, I just want to share my appreciation of trustee Miles and trustee Sopanian. I've been really impressed with your contribution to our meetings on how quickly you're already getting used to being a trustee. So I wanted to appreciate you both. I also wanted to say that I I've been really enjoying some of my site visits, seeing some of the work happening on our sites. I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers and classified staff and our principals for everything you're doing. I know that you are balancing a lot of challenges right now. Many of you are having to sub, take extra kids in the middle of a heat wave, right? So you're all juggling a lot. So I just want to say thank you because I see it at the school sites, and on top of that, you have an amazing attitude to show the kids to continue to do the work. So I'm just amazed with our district on a daily basis to do it in that way while handling the challenges. So I also want to say thank you to facilities, Dr. Hurst, because, you know, they saw that the heat wave was coming. We can always do things better, and we always have to learn from those things. But renting the swamp coolers right away, they were here on Monday, fixing some of our facilities issues. I really do appreciate our staff getting ahead of that and continuing to do whatever we can to support what happens in the classroom. And and as a growth, you know, we can, to continue to think about how are we supporting those places, like Benno Valley High School that, you know, had to put all those kids in 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 a room, right? Next, I wanted to just say I apologize to Dr. Hurst. I want to say it in public for what happened tonight, and none of us stepped forward to stop it. That was not okay, and I wanted to say I am sorry to you. Because I agree with every sentiment you shared every earlier. From the, what I was saying in the public, we should have stopped it. So I want to say sorry. And I had one more, but I'm out of time. So thank you so much, everybody. Have a good night.
All right. And then I just close out with the closing remarks, just to say to everyone, because it's been a tough week, you know, and, you know, through the heat. But I want to say, you know, to everybody, you know, you, you doing a good job, you know, and and we just, we got, we got to make sure our stuff is working on our school sites and making sure our facilities are together. And making sure our facilities are running correctly and not waiting for something to happen. But we need to be proactive of seeing our facility, all of our facilities in in good condition and and working and full, working to the best. So I wanted to say to everyone, have a good evening. And thank you for everything you have done, and have a good night, and see you later. The meeting is adjourned.